My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're short a few board members and we're short superintendent this evening. So I am going to ask Mary to be our board secretary for this evening. Would you do that, please?
Certainly.
As secretary, would you take the attendance?
I shall. President DeAlessandro?
Here.
Vice President Shaffer?
Here.
Secretary Dr. Reese is absent. Treasurer Hanser, present. Trustee McDonough?
Here.
Trustee Summers?
Here.
Trustee Whitney is also absent. Thank you.
Okay. And there are no changes to the board agenda. Item number three is our school presentation, Oxford Elementary School. Mr. Jeff Brown.
Hi, good evening. I have not been here in a long time. OES has always had the presentation either in March or April, and so going all the way back to the COVID year, we were canceled that year, and I haven't been here since like prior to that. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think it's probably my first time in like four or five years where I've had a chance to talk about Oxford Elementary to the board. So I truly am excited and honored to be with you guys tonight. When sitting down trying to decide what areas of Oxford Elementary to present, the first one, I think, was very obvious with our SEL support and our positive behavior intervention and supports. I know that you've had this presentation a few times from the other building, but it's something that we're really proud of. And the next two on this list are, I think, sorry about that.
Item number?
The next two items on the list are our two goal areas where I think we're going to be headed in the future as primary focus. So it did take a little bit of thought behind these two, but I wanted you to know why we landed on these three programs or initiatives to present to you tonight. So about a little over a year ago, behavior in, I think, all of our buildings coming off of COVID, coming off of some strange years, was a little bit different than maybe what we were accustomed to. We started our PBIS journey by visiting a school in Port Huron. I want to make sure I'm giving credit to all the right people tonight. Christine Russell has been instrumental in helping set up that visit for us. We had a chance to sit down and talk with the school who has a fully functioning PBIS program going on in their building. They were very gracious and they shared all of their materials with us, a lot of their trials and tribulations. And that school in Port Huron has been instrumental in helping us get to where we are today. There are several people on this team besides me. I kind of get the credit for standing here today, but there's four that I really wanted to make sure that we recognized. Carly Hale, Brianna Overholt, Courtney Moran, and Gillian Justmore have all been instrumental in getting this program going within our building. We started with a staff survey, and we asked staff what they saw as the hotspots were in the building and what some of the behaviors that were most concerning to staff were. And again, keeping in mind, we started this a little bit over a year ago. At that point, we were just really concerned in general with hallway behavior, lunch behavior, just in general. Kids have been a little bit off of what we've been used to. The student survey was very interesting. Their biggest hotspot was the lunchroom. The lunchroom is a really hard spot for kids because some kids want to eat in silence, some kids don't care about the noise level in there. But it is one of the spots where we want all kids to be comfortable. And so it wasn't shocking that that was the spot that came up as the most concerning to kids, but it's also a really hard one to remedy because there's not a one-size-fits-all for what a lunchroom could look like. And some of the other traditional spots that we'll see when we talk about the OlveaS data was also the same. Bus behavior, outside recess behavior, and of course, those are our spots that are the least supervised by adults. And so it's not shocking that those were some of the hot button areas. One of the key pieces to our program is we're passing out paw bucks like crazy. If you've been inside OES anytime recently, you can see we purchased three display cases where we have all the prizes that kids help select through surveys. They've all got dollar amounts on them, and so the paw bucks are being given very freely. Some of the ones that I'm most proud of are the milkshakes and slushies with the principal. It's a really fun Friday for me on the days where I get to make food for kids and do some of that. And I guess I'm just going to go for it and say at the board meeting, hope I don't get in trouble for it later. But another one is taking pictures throughout the building, and so the kids are all taking pictures with their feet up in my desk. We have a couple of secret spots that we sneak to in OES that people don't normally get to see or even know exist. So we've just had a lot of fun going to spots that kids don't normally need to see. And the reason I share those prizes is they're essentially free. So PBIS is a little bit expensive. Kids like stuff, but we're really proud of some of the things that are low cost, no cost, that actually kids get as much enjoyment out of as anything. We are having tons of fun doing monthly behavior assemblies. And so if you make it through the whole month with no major violations, and for the most part, a major violation is something physical or something that's ongoing bullying related, and we're talking maybe five kids at the most a month out of about 370. So very few kids are missing these monthly assemblies. But to give you a couple of examples, this month right now, actually starting today practicing, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the dot and line game. It's one of those indoor recess classics where you make a whole bunch of dots on the piece of paper. You take turns making lines. So we're doing NCAA tournament-style brackets in the classrooms. Each classroom will have one winner. We're doing the assembly on Friday where we kind of celebrate everybody's behavior. And then the winner from each classroom and me will make up the 16 people in the bracket, and we'll narrow it down to one. Erin Bennett, our amazing tech, has set it up with our new projector so that we have an iPad connected to the projector. And so we will actually be playing the dot and line game from an iPad connected to the projector for everybody to see. So it's just been kind of a fun, entertaining way to keep kids engaged. We've had limbo contests. We've done an art activity. We walked in the fall on a beautiful day in the Pollyanna Trail for a monthly celebration. So again, that theme is low cost, no cost, but we want it to be high fun for kids. For the kids who do not qualify for the assembly, they meet with me and/or Ms. Overholt. We have a sheet that we've developed that helps them reflect on their behavior, and they set some goals for how to make sure that they can qualify for the following month. In total on the year, we've had less than 20 different students who have had to miss assemblies. We have had a couple of repeat offenders, and that means we're, you know, working even harder on the behavior. But the huge majority of our kids are qualifying every single month for those, which makes it kind of fun. One of our most recent additions is the check-in, check-out procedure. And so we're kind of testing this out a little bit. We have about a dozen kids who each morning meet with one of their trusted adults who they identified. A lot of times in the morning before school, it's one of our specialists like Mr. Collins in PE, Mr. Tyner in music. Ms. Overholt and I also have some kids that are assigned to us. And so they have a daily checklist that they go through that helps them to have a great day. When they come see us in the morning, we hand them their sheet. We give them a high five, a handshake, hey, remember to have an awesome day. Hey, let's keep focused here. So it is completely a positive conversation. At the end of each day, those kids bring their sheets down, and they meet with either me and/or Ms. Overholt. And that one is also completely positive. We look for something on their sheet that they did a really nice job with. If they even remember to have their sheet filled out, they get a small piece of candy, and then they go off about their way. Every two weeks, Ms. Overholt and I sit and meet with them, and we go through all of their think sheets, and we kind of track the data to see how the plan has been going for them. We just started implementing this the week after spring break, so I think we're about three weeks in. So far, really positive. The kids who are participating are all doing better. Their goals are all over the place from work completion to executive functioning, getting ready to start their day. It's completely tailored to the students' individual needs, but it's been a fun piece so far. And the last piece, and this has really been added for just a week at this point, is our pause and reflect room. Dr. Markovich gave us all the ability at each building level to add some type of a behavior support room. We made the decision for ours to focus on work completion. And so teachers who have a student who they've given a reminder or a couple of reminders to to get working on work, if they make it to one of their three recess times during the course of the day, and they still haven't completed that work, they can send the student down to that room only to finish the work. And so their only consequence is being there until the work is finished. As soon as that work is done, they're back outside for recess. And we're a little too early to give you any data on how that's going yet. But the goal is to experiment with it from now until the end of the school year and make some decisions on whether or not it's something that we want for next year. So this is the student survey that we talked about through PBIS. Excuse me. This is, let me make sure I'm looking at it right. All right. This one is PBIS, and the next one's going to be the OlveaS survey. You can kind of, of course, read for yourself, but these are the highlights of the survey that we wanted to make sure that we pointed out to you today. And directly connected, and this was given in January of this year, and so this was a few months into the PBIS program. And so a couple of the spots that we really wanted to make sure that we highlighted are 82% of students say that good behavior is recognized. That's one of the main parts of the PBIS program, is to make sure that all the kids, including the huge majority that show up every single day and do exactly what they're supposed to every day, that those kids feel recognized as well. And of course, that last one of 90%, 95% of students are saying that there's an adult that's going to help them when it's needed. It doesn't do any good to have great reporting mechanisms if the students don't feel like action is being taken from their words. This is a couple of highlights from the OlveaS survey that we just gave as a district. So the first one, of course, we are very pleased that we have less students that are reporting being bullied than the national average. I guess going along with that piece, we have less students who are reporting bullying themselves that are saying that that's happening. And then, of course, this very last one is one that I think we've worked on for years, and it's always important. And it's nice to see that the national average was 90%, but it's nice to see that 95% of kids are showing empathy or feel something for the kids that are maybe having some difficulty. I think that fits in really well with the culture that we are trying to create. And I believe the board's getting the full summary of our OlveaS surveys, but these are just a couple that I wanted to pull out and highlight tonight. Okay, so I want to make sure I explain this just a little bit. So I'm shifting gears to reading. Obviously, SEL was the main focus of our world here coming back this year. But we do need to start looking forward to the future and thinking about where we want to go with our professional development, our learning, and our next push. Reading, I wanted to make sure, and I'm sure the board is aware of, like, our daily curriculum is Foundation and Lucy Caukens. Our teachers have gotten considerable training over the last few years, and I think it's something that our teachers are definitely learning to do very well. WinTime was an initiative that was implemented last year, so 30 minutes of instruction daily where kids are pulled out for reading support, but within the classroom, there's not new learning happening. And so our teachers are becoming more skilled at working with the kids that are both in the classroom and the ones who are being pulled out for extra special help, which leads me to that third point of the reading intervention room. When Jen Roop started in the reading room five years ago, there was primarily one program that she delivered. And we were very lucky. She was coming as a lower elementary teacher from Daniel Axford, you know, very skilled in teaching kids to read. But at that point, we kind of had one tool in our toolbox. That room has grown to having three staff members in there. OES is very lucky that all three of ours are certified teachers, even though we're getting one of them at a bargain basement rate, which is pretty fantastic for Mrs. Cicero. But we've also grown to the spot where we're offering multiple interventions for kids. And so we're much more diagnostic when it comes to helping kids as opposed to that one-size-fits-all, which is where we started five years ago. And it leads me to the next picture or to the next chart that's there. Pretty much every education trade magazine right now talks about how hard education is right now, the effects of COVID, what that's done for children in terms of their reading. When you look at the fifth graders in my building right now, the impact of the last three years on those fifth graders has definitely been a challenging time. Their FAS scores are lower, their M-stop scores are not as high as what we would love. The reading support that they're getting in that reading intervention room as a fifth grader, we still have a few fifth graders that are getting support in phonics, which would not be the norm for us. That's much more of a third grade intervention historically at Oxford Elementary School. But there is some bright side to that, and that's where we bring up the chart that I know is short and sweet. Traditionally, you would see this chart of number of students who were doing well on the FAS test. We would typically use the 30th percentile as the mark that we celebrate. I just wanted to be clear. I chose the 50th percentile today, and to be really precise, I probably would have chosen about the 57th or 58th percentile. Because what we've noticed on FAS is that's about the percentile that you need to reach to be guaranteed of passing an M-step. And so the 50th percentile is a little bit closer than the 30th to where I would expect to see our kids performing on an M-step. The 30th percentile is the number that we traditionally use for when a kid qualifies for intervention. But I did want to make sure I explained why I chose this spot. The other piece that I wanted to highlight here, in 2019, so that's going back to the fall right before COVID, 62% of our third graders were achieving above the 50th percentile. So that's a pretty good number. Our middle-of-the-road kid would have been the 62nd percentile in the nation. And that's pretty historic for how our third graders have come in over the years. If you follow that across, our third graders that started this year, 70% of them were scoring above the 50th percentile. So like my short quote for that is like, we're kind of back, and maybe potentially even a little bit better. And a lot of that speaks to the hard work at Daniel Axford. What I wanted to point out in the yellow, though, and sometimes we just have to put the truth out there, that cohort that started pre-COVID at the 62nd percentile with more kids above the 50th percentile, if you look at that group right now as a fifth-grade group, 50% of our kids are at the 50th percentile nationally, which isn't a terrible number. I mean, that's the purpose of it being the national percentile. But we're very used to at Oxford Elementary exceeding that on this measure, and our current group of fifth graders isn't there. We've thrown a ton of intervention at them over the last little bit, but as the board is well aware, these last three years have been anything but typical, and unfortunately, that shows in the scores. But my hope is with this group coming in, that we're going to be headed back to the direction that we've traditionally been at OES. So some reading solutions. I talked a little bit about the restructuring of, excuse me, I talked a little bit about the ways that we've made some change within the reading room. But we have some additional pieces that we are adding right now. The structure of our resource rooms at OES is changing. We're making some things, for example, Mrs. Hale, whose name was on the first slide for helping with PBIS, she currently as a resource room teacher works with 12 different teachers. And so that means she's managing 12 different schedules when she's trying to design her intervention groups. We've done some shifting that's going to get her down to three or four classrooms, and that's going to be our norm for all of our resource room teachers next year. We're getting more creative with the way that we're assigning both resource room students and students who are on IRIPs, the students who are getting the reading support, in order to limit the amount of class time that they're going to miss and maximize the amount of time that they're going to be able to get intervention. And so hopefully, they're going to have almost no instructional minute loss with some of the shifts that we're doing to the schedule. And I hope when I'm in front of you at this time next year, that I can give you the full, like, kind of version of what we're doing with the resource room. It's very exciting. It's neat. It's completely driven by the teachers and ideas that they had. It's been supported by some training that Mrs. Beal and other special ed staff have gotten over the last year from Oakland schools. So that very well could be the focus of this conversation next year. The evolution of the reading support, we discussed, I think, a little bit already. Our OES teachers next year are going to have the pleasure of working with Mrs. Magdaleno. It's going to be our fourth and fifth grade teachers focus on the coaching cycle with our reading coach, and so that'll be an exciting piece for them. Our third grade teachers received that intensive training with her this year. She did a fantastic job of typically, our third graders, we would be focused more on comprehension, our worry has been in phonics, and she tailored their training to what they needed with a ton of phonics support for our third grade teachers. So if nothing else, they're going to be better equipped in the future with dealing with just a huge variety of kids in front of them. And the last thing when it comes to our reading is we need some patience. When you look at our scores historically, they've always been very good. We have some things in place that I'm very confident are going to get us back to that point. But we're not going to recover from the last three years instantly, and that's also going to happen in our academics as well as the SEL world. And so we just ask for a little bit of patience. I think we have a good plan in place, and I think we're going to be ready, and I think we're going to be proud of these scores again in the really near future. Last, I don't feel like we can ever do a presentation without talking about IB. And bizarrely, International Baccalaureate, we had our official evaluation during COVID. I don't know that that was ever presented to the board over the course of these last two years. And so for our visit, one of our visitors was just outside of Mexico City. The other one was in Florida. And the way we interacted with them was through iPad. That included classroom visits. That included student interviews. Mrs. Moran and I got really good at using Zoom, and we marched around the building almost like a robot, holding the iPad in front of us and giving them the whole virtual tour of the building. In the end, as you'll see in the last slide tonight, I think it went incredibly well. It was very strange. It was very different. It was awkward, but it was also really cool. And it gave us an opportunity, I think, to still be able to express ourselves very well, but it was a little bit different. A couple of the commendations that we got were the commitment by the board and by the leadership team. And so that's central office. That's the board members that were interviewed. It was very recognizable, the overall commitment of our district to International Baccalaureate. Our Spanish teachers, in particular, with what we're doing with the language, was one that they listed on our report directly. And even though they were through Zoom and through iPad, very positive comments about our learning environment. We did have one matter to be addressed. This was the first time that OES has ever had a matter to be addressed on one of these reports. And I don't completely agree with this one, but it was honest. What they decided to point out for us was that we needed to do a better job of staff participation in the IB sanctioned training programs. I point out, this was during the COVID year, and so all of the IB offered training was virtual. We had some new staff members that we were holding because we wanted them to have the in-person experience. In my opinion, part of doing the IB program is getting to visit schools that are of the same designation. And so we were intentionally waiting to be able to send some staff members to in-person training, and we kept being told, it's coming, it's going to open, it's coming, and then our visit came, and we still hadn't done it yet. So I don't know. I'm not completely willing to own that one. It was intentional on the district's part for waiting, but that is the one area where they marked us at the bottom. We did, of course, remedy that by offering our teachers the online training, and I hope in the near future that they'll have the opportunity to attend some training in person. So here's some of the things that we're working on. This is kind of the who do we want to become? This is our goal for the future. We are exploring building-wide themes. So IB is broken down into six themes. The first theme of the year is already aligned in our building of who we are, kind of a logical one to start the year with. But what we'd really like to do is have all six of those themes lined up. In terms of sending messages out to parents, doing things on the morning announcements, bringing in presenters, just decorating the building. If we were all on the same theme, we think that would be a really powerful thing for kids and a big motivator. And so that's something that we really want to move towards. Unit updates are constant. We have a new social studies curriculum that I think is going to be coming to you for adoption between now and next summer. So that's going to be something new for our teachers, which is going to mean they're going to need to do some updates within their curriculum. But if we do switch to building-wide themes, we are going to need to do some reworking of how things are lined up, and that's going to just take some time and some effort. IB training, of course, we talked about. Teachers indicated connections with specials are something that they would really like to continue. Vertical planning, so instead of just our fifth grader teachers working together, of making sure our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers are working together. And we have started to have some conversation with Daniel Axford about the trying to do the themes consistently all the way from DK through five. We don't get a ton of time together. It's very difficult to work in the schedule, but that's something that we've talked about as a goal. And for those of you, I know some of you on the board have had your own children go through exhibition, and I know many of you have seen exhibition. One of the changes that we're working to make this year is kids have gotten very accustomed to doing PowerPoint and slides and things like that for exhibition. And we're really trying to push kids hard away from that. Our dream version might be something, for example, a student making a song that's connected to their exhibition. For their exhibition project, they would sing their song, perform their song, perform their music. But their presentation, instead of slides, would be choosing the, explaining why they chose specific words in the song. Mr. Tyner would probably do a better job, but explaining why they made it sound dramatic in one point and why they made it sound lighter in one point. So actually explaining how they wrote their song, both musically, but how it relates to the content. And so instead of just having the PowerPoints over and over again, we're trying to get the kids to be a little bit more creative. And so our goal was to focus on about 10 groups this year as some exemplars, and then next year to kind of pull the plug completely on PowerPoints in that aspect. So our goal is just to increase the creativity. Those activities on that list were listed in order that teachers prioritize them with a spend-a-buck activity that Mrs. Moran led. And so every teacher basically got a dollar. We had a list of about 10 or 12 things, and they got to then prioritize which ones they wanted. The top one, the building-wide themes, was probably 50% higher than even the second choice. And so that's something that teachers have indicated they're very interested in. All of the items that were on that spend-a-buck list came from our report as things that we should think about from there. So they weren't just things that we were pulling out of thin air. They were completely based in the report. And last, Mrs. Moran and I, we've decided, like, we kind of repulled out this letter the other day, and we sort of decided that we just want to start, like, each day of our lives, like, reading this. It's kind of a good positive affirmation. I'm not sure what it looked like in your board packet, but I'll be quiet for just a second so you can glance at it if you like. Isella was our evaluator who is just outside of Mexico City. Mrs. Bartlett's third grade class has been involved with a sort of a virtual pen pal experience with that class over the course of the school year. And all the content of this letter came from our iPad virtual visit. And so it'd be one of those just kind of great things if we actually had the chance to physically be present in the same place. But Google Earth is an amazing thing. We've been able to see the school that we're pen palling with from outside and walk around and do all that. And the beauty of having one-to-one Chromebooks for our kids now is they were able to then one-to-one talk with their student counterpart at the school just outside of Mexico City. Long-term goals for that program, we'd love to see our students have the opportunity to practice their Spanish, and their students to have the opportunity to practice their English. And so as a long-term goal, that would be a really neat thing if all of our kids were able to have a similar experience to that moving through. Right now, we're at one school. Pre-COVID, we had probably four or five schools that we were communicating with pretty regularly, and it's time to build that back up. That is everything I've got for you tonight.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Go ahead, Mary.
I have comments. I'm so excited. I'm so energized. Thank you. Thank you. I've been able to visit this school a few times, and I love your building. Some things that stuck out to me was when you're talking about check-in, check-out, identifying what I need to have a good day. That's, you know, that's great for adults, too, you know, just the skills that you're talking about, teaching, even down to being creative with your presentation and not just doing a PowerPoint, though I love your PowerPoint.
I'll sing for you next time if you want.
That would be awesome. But what a great way to engage the students, too, you know, to, for them to tap into some of their own creativity. You know, that maybe they don't have a place to do that. It was interesting when you brought up how, with the fifth grade numbers, how they started pre-COVID versus those who started more at home, and it really is a marked difference. It was just really, I hadn't thought about it, about how you start one way and you learn that way, and then it changes, so that makes it challenging. And how, if you've always done it that way, like my young adult kids and their phones, and how they can do everything because they've always done it. And I'm back there trying to catch up. So that was really interesting. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the resource room of the creativity. You know about, you're talking about having pen pals, too. What a great opportunity with the technology that we have to really learn more about other people in other cultures and other spaces. I think the language is great, and it's great to learn that there's more than just the neighborhood you live in. I think that's fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. That was, I'm all excited. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Anybody else? Jeff, thanks for coming back after, what'd you say, four years of not being able to present for various different reasons. But one of the things that I pulled out is I like the fact that we're rewarding doing your job. And there's a measure in there that if you don't do your work, there's a consequence to it. I think we have to get a nice balance of that, not too punitive. I think we have to get a nice balance of that, not too punitive where they can never come back, but understand that you have to get your job done, you have to get your work done, because it's important, and that is good to see that we're emphasizing that, as well as rewarding when they do, so I'm glad to see there's a nice balance there. Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
All right, thanks, guys, I appreciate it, and I'm not going to be rude, I'm running to Birmingham Sea Home to watch some girls' soccer right now, which is hopefully their second-to-last league game tonight, it's a big one.
All right.
Go Wildcats.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
Angela, any, anything submitted under four participation on public comm? Okay. So we will jump to number five. Our consent agenda, which is the minutes of April 11th for our regular meeting and our meeting minutes for April 11th in our closed session. There's a motion there, can I have Jeff or James, I'm sorry?
It moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Amanda, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to item six. The board wanted some further discussion after our last presentation, we want to hear some further discussion on the Honor Community Health Clinic, and so that is...
Can I just make a comment?
Of course.
I'm shocked, nobody is here to comment on that, and...
Pre-arranged. So they had, so let me just clarify.
I was gonna say, I think you need to clarify, because I know what's going on, but I'm not sure that everybody else is understanding.
Okay, so it was presented and adopted by the board maybe two, three months ago, where we would leave a space for audience to participate before, on any topic that was on the agenda, before it was actually presented, so your opinions could be heard on any topic that the board had on the agenda. One of the rules that you have to do that is you have to present that to the four o'clock Monday prior to the meeting, so if a meeting's on Tuesday, you would have had to have presented that Monday prior. You'll still have an opportunity to speak on unscheduled audience participation, but this was just if anybody wanted to make a comment before anything was presented. Did I explain that properly?
You did, I'm just wondering if we should waive that for today, so that everybody doesn't have to wait through our entire agenda to speak at item number nine, when I'm guessing many of our participants today are here to speak specifically about the healthcare clinic. No? Yes, no?
It's our meeting.
The only question I would have is if...
Yeah, yeah.
The follow-up to questions and clarification that we've received over the last week might assist with some of their questions and comments, I don't know, provide clarification, but...
So why don't we do this? Instead of preceding this presentation, because some of your questions may be answered during the presentation, we will put it from where it's at now as four, we'll have this presentation and we'll move it right after that. Does that sound fair? I think that's a good way to go.
Then they can make their comments, and they don't have to wait for their hour and a half.
Absolutely, yep, because we are going into a closed session, and I don't want to keep everybody through that process either. Okay, we'll do that, then. Sound good? Go ahead, Todd.
Good idea. Thank you, guys. So, as a follow-up to our presentation at the last board meeting regarding Honor Community Health, we've received a number of questions, and I really wanted the opportunity just to respond to our community regarding some of the questions, the concerns, I wanted to share the affirmations for moving forward with the clinic that we've received from the community, and really be able to move forward with integrity with regards to our community input and whatnot. So with that in mind, we went away from here after the April 11th board meeting, and we scheduled a, well, we had a district mental health committee meeting scheduled. That district mental health committee meeting is actually part of our three-year recovery plan, so we have various district committees where they have different representation from stakeholders across the district. So our mental health committee includes administrators, teachers, mental health staff, parents, and students, and so at that mental health committee, Honor Community Health was able to present, thank you, Pam, and they actually covered topics, and the district mental health committee was able to ask a lot of questions. We planned on providing about a 20-minute presentation and moving through the rest of our committee agenda, and we spent the vast majority of our time actually with Honor Health, and we had a lot of great questions. So some of the, I listed some of the key topics discussed, questions asked with specific regards to the clinic in the slide, and you all were presented with that. We talked about primary care services, behavioral health care, specialty services, we talked about parent involvement in care, we talked about the public health code, the fact that the clinic is not a for-profit entity, talked about chronic care management, which includes asthma, diabetes, seizures, things of that nature, and the fact that there is no money collected from patients, so there's no co-pays required, things of that nature. Those are just a few of the highlights, as I said, there are a number of topics listed there that were discussed with that mental health committee. As a follow-up to that, some of our board members wanted to visit an existing school-based health clinic in Oakland County that would represent a comprehensive clinic, similar to what had been proposed for Oxford High School. So on April 18th, we were able to coordinate a visit at Avondale High School to visit their health clinic. The visit included Amanda McDonough, Heather Schaefer, Mike Whitney, Desha Beasley, our high school principal, myself, and Jeff Cook, and we actually spent another period of time there, and we were actually able to interact with the practitioners there at the clinic. That is who we spent our time with, just asking them questions, engaging them. We had their physician's assistant there, we had their behavioral health clinician, and also their medical assistant, who happened to have two of her children who attend Oxford Community Schools, which was interesting to get her perspective. But anyways, some of the things that we discussed, again, were primary care services, behavioral health care, we talked about uninsured services, clinic funding and billing, we talked about emergency services, so again, a number of things are listed there, we touched on HIPAA versus FERPA and how to manage that, how they manage that, we were able to brainstorm about some ideas how we might be able to manage some of those constraints around communication within our district. We talked about some of the benefits to the school, relieving administrators and support staff who lack some of that medical expertise currently. We don't have a school-based nurse in our district, and so we talked about some of managing minor medical issues and 911 calls, we talked about managing panic attacks, seizures, asthma, diabetes, helping to train staff regarding specific medical conditions, and there are a number of other things that we mentioned up there that were discussed at our Avondale visit. So with that, since April 11th and the Honor Community Health presentation, the districts received, like I said, communications in the form of emails, phone calls, social media inquiries, with additional questions affirming the need for the clinic and seeking some clarification. So although the April 11th presentation addressed the solutions for specific community concerns that we had previously heard, I also wanted to take the time tonight to address some of the themes that we've seen in some of those inquiries. In addition to that, I want to add that the board has been provided two interagency agreements with Honor Community Health, one for the ninth through 12th grade services that we were discussing at the April 11th, and we were also asked to provide the board with a K through 12th interagency agreement also. Both agreements have been reviewed and amended by district attorneys and reviewed by Honor Community Health. So some of the questions that have been answered, will recently hired school mental health staff be obsolete or eliminated? And in response to that, current school mental health staff provides school-based interventions within a multi-tiered framework to actually support student success in the academic setting. Honor Community Health practitioners provide a more intensive level of service for acute needs that include assessment, treatment, and diagnosis from a medical model. They have significantly different responsibilities when you look at the continuum of care for a student, whether it's regards to mental health or medical needs. Have there been surveys sent out to parents? Yes, Oxford Community Schools facilitated mental health surveys for students and parents last spring, which was 2022. Previous presentations in August and April, August of 2022 and April of 2023 included key data from those surveys related to student and parent barriers to local services and specific mental health needs. This is, another question is, this is not educationally based, why after all our kids have been through the last few years and still having daily struggles, would our kids be burdened with another significant change? The intent of Honor Community Health is to provide these particular students who have acute struggles another resource for their recovery. Research indicates supporting children's physical, mental, and emotional health is foundational for academic success in school and beyond their school experience. Thanks, Pam. So another question that we received from the community is, does Proposal 3 impact the policies of school-based health clinics and services? Proposal 3 was a very controversial topic across the state. The legislation did not impact Honor Community Health policies. School-based health clinics are prohibited from providing the services and procedures referenced in Proposal 3. Is there zero liability for Honor Community Health practitioners if they misdiagnosed or treated a patient incorrectly resulting in death? So my response in our slide here is, Honor Community Health practitioners found guilty of medical malpractice or wrongful death would have the same liability as your local urgent care doctor's office pediatrician or hospital practitioners, but I really want to correct that, because I went and I was able to receive legal input regarding the interpretation of that today, and although they said that a school-based clinic funded through state grant dollars does have a certain level of protection through the federal tort law, there would be a situation where they would have certain protections, but a family would be able to pursue the allegation of was there gross negligence or wasn't there, and so that would be the question. So there is a certain level of protection, because they are serving an underprivileged population and they're funded through grant dollars, however, based on our legal interpretation from our attorneys, that was how they phrased it. So I would be happy to get further information around that if you'd like, but I wanted to clarify that component of the slide. Will HCH, Honor Community Health, be a facility that would help to keep students current on immunizations or shots? Honor Community Health will not provide any immunizations without parent consent. With parent consent, they will provide immunizations without any office visit charges or co-pays. As we continue on, could the grant be better used to open an Honor Community Health clinic at the Drainer Road property, Meyer Complex, or north of the Oxford-Glasby location? So the question came up in a couple different exchanges, could we use a location outside of the school where parents could accommodate their children? The Department of Health and Human Services grant through Honor Community Health dictates that the clinic must be located within a school to meet the funding requirements. Is Oxford High School at capacity for classroom space, and what classroom is being used? Oxford Community Schools manages classroom space and facilities to meet the needs for all students with a variety of needs. This is a similar consideration regarding a health clinic. The proposed classroom, Room 301, was selected based on being in a central location, based on current classroom utilization, square footage, and the fact that utilities are currently in the classroom. Last slide with questions and responses. Actually, that was the last slide. We're moving on to communication affirming the benefits of clinic, of a clinic at Oxford High School.
Hang on, one second.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's one more, that was the blanket consent forms. I can read it.
Go ahead, Dan, if you can.
It says, "Could blanket consent forms be active for the entire duration of a student's OHS tenure?"
Yes.
"All four years? Based on community feedback, it would be preferable to have consents completed on an annual basis, i.e. every school year, and included a District Two-way release form."
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
Can you explain that two-way release form, how that would work?
Well, in the mental health community and medical community, medical professionals require a release of information for different entities to speak to one another, and so the school is no different. When we want to communicate with, say, a child's pediatrician or mental health provider in the community, we need to have a legal release form that the parent has to sign, and we have to be in possession of that as well as the provider, and that allows us to interact together, to plan together, to do safety planning, to share information back and forth, and so the clinic would be no different. My recommendation, and it would need to be supported through the community advisory council that would be developed, or the youth advisory council, as we develop our policies and procedures going forward, would be that annually we'd have a parent consent as part of the beginning of the year paperwork, and part of that consent would include a two-way release for us to speak with either pediatrician or clinician. The clinicians could speak with us, we could speak with them back and forth, so it would open communication up between the clinic, which is HIPAA-bound, and the school, which is FERPA-bound, so that would be a solution to being able to open up some of that communication. Okay, thank you, Pam. So, I thought I had one more slide. Yeah, so, "Will having a school-based clinic open up a significant amount of security issues? Honor Community Health Clinic, as proposed, will only serve students attending Oxford High School for seated classes and are subject to current security measures while in the school." So in consulting with our security team across the district, they felt as though it wouldn't pose any additional security risks or needs the way it is proposed currently. Could Honor Community Health treat underage patients and use consents for very questionable medications or treatments? Honor Community Health functions under the same laws, regulations, and public health code that our local urgent care doctor's offices, pediatrician, or hospitals required to follow. So therefore questionable medications or treatments wouldn't be allowed there either. Could the Board of Education choose in the future to open the clinic up to the entire community, was a question. School-based health clinics can never serve an entire community, they can only provide service to children ages five to 21 years of age, or 26 years old if the child has a special education certification. Thank you, Pam. So some of the community perceived benefits that were shared in various communications included having an Honor Health clinic at Oxford High School would benefit our kids in a number of ways, including just basic access to healthcare. The clinic will be a great, would be great for sports, and on a basic level, getting kids the required yearly physicals. The availability of the clinic to our uninsured and underprivileged students is a tremendous opportunity for our community. I believe this clinic would actually benefit the community as a whole. Many doctors and clinics in the area are already overwhelmed with patients, leading to long wait times and difficulties in taking on new patients. An added benefit to having a clinic at Oxford High School is immediate access to medical care and a resource to direct children and families to outside doctors and clinics that may provide further care. It would be great to have a service to help families apply for Medicaid. Those all came from our community. Additional comments were, "Given the increasing prevalence of mental health issues in our society, having extra medical staff available to our students would be especially beneficial in providing proactive care when it is needed." Due to a chronic medical condition, this person was, actually shared a personal example, "Due to a chronic medical condition that my child sometimes needs to take rescue medication, after the medication is administered, they need to lie down and let it work with the goal of returning to class. The clinic would be an ideal place where they could do this." Another comment is, "My child has a nut allergy, and I really like the idea of clinical practitioners with medical training in the school when they are attending Oxford High School. I am much more comfortable with trained medical personnel administering medication, it has never seemed fair to me to ask our secretaries to dispense medications." And another comment is, "A clinic at Oxford High School would be very convenient." So as we move through the next slides, I really just wanted to stress that these are repetitive from our last meeting, I thought it was important to remember our why as to why we initially considered the clinic necessary as a service to our students and in our community. Many students through the multi-tiered framework have been referred for community-based treatment without a threat or suicide assessment at our... without a threat or suicide assessment at our district, community, and government partner committee meeting. Easter Seals reported, as I, as I said at our last meeting, that they are at capacity currently. And, um, and this is, would be another option for our parents and our students to have a choice to pursue that next level of care. Uh, they would have Easter Seals, and they could potentially have Honor Community Health. So, some of our next steps would include a community information meeting, um, regarding Honor Health, uh, to, again, address questions and answers for our community and provide that clarification. Our intent is to offer that next Tuesday, May 2nd, um, six-thirty, here at the middle school. And Angela, can you confirm if we'll be in the commons area, if we'd be in the media center?
Yeah, it's not being confirmed.
Okay, so, we will be at the middle, middle school. It'll either be here, or it will be in the commons area. And, uh, communication will be going out regarding that tomorrow through district communications. Uh, and then, next steps would be, uh, not only that community information meeting, but obtaining Board of Education vote, and then, uh, beginning preparation for clinic and office space if we move forward. With that, um, I can entertain questions, or I also have Jeff Cook here from Honor, uh, Community Health, if you have questions for Jeff directly.
Who wants to start? I guess I'll start. I mean, there's obviously several hot button issues here. There's safety, there's reproductive health, there's the Proposal Three issue, and the understanding of what does Proposal Three include and not include, and where does this all fit in with a clinic should we move forward? I think it was, I don't know if you pointed this out, I know it was presented at our last meeting, that this board as Honor Health also understood that there would be no conversations around reproductive health, no services for reproductive health. That is, that has not changed. So, I, I just want, before people, um, made their comments, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. It was something that has already been discussed. Um, there's more conversation that will happen, I'm sure, but, um, we, we are very well, well aware of the hot topic issues that are involved around this. So, I'll leave it up to my fellow board members to have any comments or questions for either Todd or Jeff.
Um, I-
Mary.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just wanted to start talking. Um, I'm curious, we do have, um, uh, a number of ambulance visits to the high school. Um, and, um, having been in a couple ambulance rides recently myself, um, and like, I don't, I don't know if they're taking students somewhere, or even if they're just coming to treat here, but those services are not free, um, as far as I know. I mean, I have to pay for the ambulance, I have to pay for the, uh, paramedics, I was taken to the hospital both times, and I have to pay for the emergency room, and, um, my insurance won't cover only part of it, and because I have health insurance, I'm grateful I have health insurance. But, um, if this, if it were a, you know, a situation where it couldn't be managed at school, and some of these kids were taken, I don't know if kids are taken to the hospital, I don't want to violate any rights, but, you know, there's, there's also costs involved for families who don't have insurance, who have high deductibles, just having an ambulance out. So, that's, that's something that we just hadn't talked about, but, you know, maybe that could, um, I'm seeing this as being beneficial for things that we can't manage as regular employees, but a trained professional could do so if their student, if the student had a release unfiled to be able to be treated. Now, if there was an emergency at the school and, um, the, and they did not have a release, then we would still call an ambulance? I mean, if it was some kind of medical emergency?
It would still get treated without a consent on file, right?
First time, yep, the first time, or emergency, life and death situation, they would be treated.
Right.
And I believe that's the same with or without this clinic, the first responsibility is the safety and health of that student.
Right.
And we'll figure out all the rest of it afterwards.
Right. Well, I just wanted to bring up the point, too, that there's, for things that, um, are acute, but maybe not emergency room worthy, um, there's costs involved for families. Um, and this could be beneficial for emergency situations, that's just something I'm thinking about.
That was part of our why, the why presentation in our last board meeting, and we did talk about fragile students with medical needs and, um, Honor Health being able to provide some of the workshops and training and services for us to be able to better manage those conditions, or even for families and students themselves to better manage those circumstances. Um, and we did talk about the EMS visits, and we've had more this week, unfortunately, um, in our building, so.
So, to add on Mary's question, I just want to clarify on the emergency services stuff being called out. If a student has an injury of some sort, and they're in, let's say they're in the academic, or not academic, but the athletic, they're at the pool area, are the staff facility or staff members from Honor Community Health leaving their facility to go and attend to that medical emergency? So, they'll leave their confines of, of their office space, they'll go there, treat the student for non-life-threatening stuff, and then they'll go back?
So, the way it was presented to us at our, um, visit in Avondale, was that, yeah, they said that they had, they will be called out of the clinic in order to assist, and their clinic actually has exterior access, which is what was initially proposed here last August, I believe. Uh, but we moved that because of security concerns, in order to meet the community's concerns there and address some of that. So, actually, in Avondale, though, any ambulances that come to their high school report to that rear entrance to the clinic, and those students are, are, um, triaged right there, and then that's where they receive their care, yeah.
Okay.
So, they will go out into the school, address the need, bring them back to the clinic.
But that's Avondale. So, in, in the design proposal that we have here, we don't have that. So, I don't think it's a fair apples-to-apples comparison there. So, maybe the Honor Community Health guy could come up and, and validate that, just from their standpoint of, from a legality standpoint?
Sure.
Because I understand, like, emergency services, medical stuff, you're not going to have them go outside of their territory or their jurisdiction and stuff to handle that stuff. So, I just want to make sure, because that's, that's been brought up. So, in the case of if lately, last couple of weeks, more EMS has come to the high school for different things, but if it's in a part of the building that they're not going to be able to go to, I don't want to give false pretense that, hey, this is great, now we have less EMSs coming to the school, and we're, we're treating stuff there. So, if we can get a for-sure yes on, in that example.
Sure. So, James, your question is, if we have a medical issue in the pool area, can Honor Community Health go there and attend to that issue?
Yeah, if, if the student can't be moved for whatever reason. If they're going to leave the confines of their office to go treat and take care of, unless it's something upon their, their level of-
Jeff, can you speak to it?
Yeah. That's it. Uh, great question. So, um, if it's a true emergency, um, all consent goes out the window. So, we will do whatever it takes to save that student's life, whether it be breathing, bleeding, anything. Um, if it isn't a true emergency, let's say they fall and hit their leg, then we will, um, if we can, you know, if we're, if we're actively seeing a patient and treating a patient in the clinic, um, we will, you know, attend to that client, or patient. If we're free, then we'll go and assess the situation. If it isn't a true emergency, like if that child's life is not in danger, um, what we'll do is, we'll provide, um, verbal assistance, uh, we'll provide assessment recommendations. Um, if we do lay hands on, it has to be back in the clinic. So, if it isn't a true emergency, then we will need to bring that student back to the clinic to, um, treat, to, um, you know, lay hands on. Um, but, it's very beneficial because we'll have a, um, a medical practitioner to provide assistance, guidance, and that's what most of the time, um, I think the teachers, uh, staff need is that level of expertise. Um, when in doubt, we're going to recommend calling EMS anyways, if we think it is a, uh, even a borderline emergency. Um, I think to have that validation by the practitioner is very valuable. Um, and that's been the case, um, in a lot of our school-based health centers, just having that expert, um, expertise, give that recommendation.
Okay. My, my own other concern is if, if, if a student goes unconscious and isn't breathing, that from a school perspective, we're still going to call nine-one-one as, as well as, because I don't want to, I don't want to, like, say, oh, we're not, we need to go get somebody from the clinic, come down first, and then wait and get, get a, you know, that validation of, of stuff.
Oh, yeah. And we, we would support that nine-one-one call. That would be our first recommendation.
Okay.
While we're doing CPR, you know, rescue breathing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we don't deviate from our EOP.
Right.
Our EOP is our EOP, we follow it, that's how it goes. You're a supplement to that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah. Heather.
Jeff, while you're up here, I wanted to clarify a couple of things that I learned when I was at Avondale and, um, and were in some of the slides that I thought might be misconceptions. I remember the gal, um, that was, um... So, there are no medications given as far as, like, daily medications. I know one of the public comments was, you know, about it, it would be nice to have more of a medical expertise person distribute medication to their child for seizures or daily meds or whatever they're on. That actually would not be the case. That would still be in the responsibility of the school administrator's office, i.e. secretary, whomever. Um, that would not be done by Honor. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, we don't keep, um, the student's medications, we don't store it. Um, but what we would do, if we do have consent from the parent, let's say the child is, um, taking insulin for diabetes.
Okay.
With consent, that student could come down to the clinic and get assistance, um, you know, whether it be assistance to administer, if they had any questions about side effects. Um, so, we will be there to assist if the student brings the medication down, or, I don't know what your policy would be in terms of releasing medication, you know, maybe it's a, a school official to come down. So, if we do have, um, consent, we would assist in any way that is needed. Um, sometimes we found out that the student sometimes requires, um, just some supervision, maybe it's their first time administering whatever, um, could be an inhaler, could, could, you know, any medication. Sometimes they just need assistance, they need, um, maybe some advice, just someone there to supervise, um, and that's been beneficial in the past.
Okay. Can I keep going with a couple more things?
Sure.
Um, so, also, I know you talked about the two-way, two-way communication slash consent. I, I have a lot of questions about the consent issue, so, um, because you're, you would be bound by HIPAA, and we're bound by FERPA, but we also have, like, administrative guidelines and policies that we have to, that put into place for, for suicides and, and things like that. So, how would you know what our administrative guidelines and policies are, and how would you, um, meet those requirements, being in our building, seeing our students? And then, how would you communicate over to us what you did with that student? Um, because when I was there, the gal was giving us that example that she had seen somebody the day before who had some suicidal tendencies. They had called mom, had a conversation over the phone, they were going to follow up and do some outside mental therapeutic support. But I said, well, had you called the school yet? And she said, no. So, the school didn't know that all that had gone into place.
Right, right. So, um, if it's a, if it's an emergency, if it's a suicide attempt, um, or-
It wasn't an attempt, but it was just somebody that was kind of, I guess, talking.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't tell me specifics, obviously, but-
Yeah. So, anything, anything that we release to the school, we would need, we would need a release of medical records from the parent. So, it would have to be a signed release. And we, um, we often, you know, if we get that signed release from the parent, then we're authorized to release, but quite honestly, we give that ownership and give that, um, we recommend that the parent, once that parent signs that, you know, then we recommend, we always recommend that the parent, uh, release that. But if there is a medical release of information, then as long as we have that consent, then the parent, um, and the student, the student has rights to release that information, too. Then, you know, then there's a, there's a legal, um, right to release that information. So, we would not do anything unless it's an emergency without that medical release, um, consent. So, unless, unless it's a, you know, true emergency, then it goes out the window.
Can I piggyback off of that? Do you mind?
Yes, go ahead.
So, you were, you were speaking in terms of the suicide assessment. On the other side of that is the threat assessment. We have in place here in Oxford, you know, a-
It's okay.
Am I not up all the way? Okay.
Speak a little bit more into the mic.
Okay. Um, so, here in Oxford, with the threat assessment, there's a, a whole team, you know, we have SROs and admin, and, and a lot of people involved now when it comes to that. But from my understanding, when we visited Avondale, what could potentially happen now is that a student will go to the clinic and have some thoughts, some drawing, some whatever, and that one psychologist would make the determination of whether or not to let their parents know. So, the school, as we're going through Sabers and all of these other tracking devices to try to pick up these red dots, red flags, everyone calls them something different, um, on students to get the full picture, we could potentially be missing out on, on an entire area because the school will not be involved in that whatsoever, unless that one psychologist decides to tell the parents, and the parents decide to tell the school. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, so, in, in terms of a suicide, our, um, they are behavioral health clinician, they are trained to assess for suicide, um, assess for threat. Um, so, I don't know what kind of, you know, all this policy between the school and the cli- uh, clinic, um, will be shared, obviously. We would need to know what your policy is, you would need to know what our policy is. So, let's say the policy is that, um, you know, a student is at threat for suicide, they would need a comprehensive evaluation, which our clinician can do. If you have the policy that we'll, you know, we'll need some type of documentation or evaluation, then we would give that evaluation to the parent. Once we give that evaluation of the parent, they, he or she can do whatever they want. So, they don't need a medical release, um, from us to give it to you. We would need a medical release for us to give it to the school, you know, and not come directly from the parent. So, I would, I would imagine that the, you know, you have a, a policy in place where, you know, we would do the evaluation, any paperwork that is required in terms of your policy, the parent would need to know that because that's the only way that their child can get back in school and be safe. So, that parent would have to probably show proof of evaluation by our clinician, which is perfectly fine, you know, um, that we don't need medical release for that.
Can you just clarify also real quick, because you kind of touched on it, and I thought what I heard at Avondale was that if the school did a suicide or threat assessment and required the student to be cleared by a mental health professional to come back into the school, that clinic cannot do that. It has to be someone outside of them, correct?
Yeah. It, it, it could go both ways. The clinician, the clinician is trained to do that. Um, it's, it's a discussion that to have with that clinician. Some clinicians, um, feel, they don't feel comfortable being that final release, you know? Um, I've had clinicians in the past that, uh, have felt comfortable with that process of being the final release. So, it really is, is a discussion with probably me, the clinician, um, Rosa, who is our psychologist who oversees, um, all the clinicians. But it could be, it could be a final release, and it just depends on the situation. Maybe, um, you know, for example, is this their fifth, sixth, seventh attempt? Is this their first attempt? Um, some of the discussions that have taken place between the clinicians and, um, our director of mental health is, you know, how serious, what, what, how, how long has this patient been dealing with these suicide attempts? Um, how many attempts has taken place in the past? Um, you know, there are parameters to that. So, they, they are trained to be that final. Um, but I'll tell you honestly, depending on the seriousness of the suicide attempt, how many attempts, sometimes we'll recommend saying, um, this is our impression, however, we would like the parent to have a final evaluation, let's say, by a psychiatrist. So, um, it is a case-by-case basis, to tell you the truth. Yeah.
Thank you. Heather, I'll let you keep going, but I do have some more.
Amanda, just real quick, um, with regards to both of those comments, um, with regard, I, I was with a number of pediatricians this weekend at, at a conference, and, um, that was really the purpose of that conference, was to find out how we can work together better with them being governed by HIPAA and us being governed by FERPA. We also had law enforcement there, because law enforcement gets information, and it's hard to collaborate with them as well as the school district. Amanda, just real quick, um, with regards to both of those comments, um, with regard, I, I was with a number of pediatricians this weekend a- at a conference, and, um, that was really the purpose of that conference, was to find out how we can work together better with them being governed by HIPAA and us being governed by FERPA. We also had law enforcement there because law enforcement gets information and it's hard to collaborate with them as well as the school district. And so it was overcoming some of those barriers. So the clinic is no different than, would be no different than any other mental health provider or, or health provider. And that was really, uh, point of contention, is that the school would put our local pediatricians or mental health providers in those positions where we'd say, can you sign off and say, this child is safe to return to our school? And they, they, uh, universe, I, they were pediatricians from across the state, and they are all being asked to do those types of, um, assessments. And because several of them have histories with students, they're, they feel more comfortable. I spoke to one of our local pediatricians. She says she is willing to work with the school because she's part of our community. That would be the hope with Honor Health, that it would be, they would be part of our community. Um, with regards to sharing information, um, if there, i- if a clinician is seeing somebody who has suicidal ideation, um, that is no different than any other student that we refer out for mental health services. Any clinician in our community that's treating a student for suicidal ideation or any other mental health condition, they are not going to communicate with the school unless we have a medical release of information with them. So that's why having, having a relationship with, say, Honor Community Health would allow us to build in some of those policies, work through some of those issues. That's the same thing we've done with Easter Seals. So at times, Easter Seals can actually sign off when we have a student that needs a third-party screener in order to determine their ability to return to school. We've worked directly with them because they're a co-located services. So that would be my, my hope. Um, uh, we struggle in the community in order to overcome some of those barriers, so.
It, but my question to that, though, is that's something that's been identified here at the school, and we've referred them out to an outside clinician for that, that final stuff, and I understand that it wouldn't go back. But if a student self-reported inside the clinic of, of either suicidal or mental disturbance, ideations and stuff, and then they were, they, the clinic made contact with the parent, and that, that form wasn't there, there's no, nothing that the school would know, and they come back the next day as nothing ever happened, and we'd have no, no, no record of it. Whereas when it's our school and our counselors and the, the FSLs that we have here, at least we know from documentation that we've seen these trends or different things, and you have a little bit more from a preparational standpoint of a reentry. Correct?
Well, the only thing is, is that our, our counselors and our social workers and stuff in the school level are providing interventions to identify students that need that next level of care. So when they refer our students out and our families go into the community, and they might go to New Oakland Services or Common Ground or something along those lines, and now they have a therapist and they're working with that therapist, that therapist, as they're working with them, maybe on the fourth or fifth visit, they identify this child's having some suicidal ideation, they're struggling with anxiety and depression, uh, they, they do not have an obligation to contact our, our, um, school counselor or a school administrator in regards to that. So they're bound by the same restrictions I'm saying.
But what is the reentry? Do we, we don't, we don't ask for, um, a, a clarification or a certification that, you know, I guess, I'm trying to, trying to ask this in a way. So if they do it and they go there, and I understand like their treatment and what they talk about and everything, all HIPAA protected and stuff, but before they reenter, do we, do we require, and, and forgive my ignorance on this, do we require anything from the clinician saying, hey, we met, they're in treatment, and, and that's all we need for them to come back to the school? I mean...
Well, James, we're talking about two different things, I think, if I'm hearing you correctly. I'm talking about a student that's receiving therapy, say, once a week or every other week, maybe twice a week. What happens in that client, um...
Okay.
You know, clinician-patient session.
Yeah.
They don't share that information with us unless they have a release of information to communicate back and forth. If we do a threat assessment or a suicide screener and we refer a student out, we say we need a third-party screener in order for them to return to school.
That's what I'm asking for.
That right there.
Okay.
Yeah, so that we do require, uh, we give them the paper, a physician, a clinician signs off on that, and they return.
But if they go to the clinic and they do that threat assessment and they refer them to somebody else outside of it, there's nothing that, there's no communication necessarily if there's not that two-way agreement, that we'd know that they referred them from that threat assessment outside, and the student could come back.
If they go to the clinic, there's not a threat assessment.
Okay.
The threat assessment happens.
Threat assessment's committed, completed by our building.
Okay.
Level team.
Let me have an ask here.
Yeah, okay.
Of our, of, of a...
I hope we clarified that for you, James. Yeah?
Let me have an ask of our pending, uh, vote down the road. If, because I understand where they're all coming from, we're sending a student outside of our walls to address a suicide, suicidal ideology. Now we're bringing a clinic here, they're addressing that need. In both cases, they may not have to report. They may not have to get a letter to come back and say they've been treated, they've, they've gone through this process. When the clinic has that conversation, can we have it written in our agreement where a school official will be brought into that? Because as it is now, they're gonna go see a guidance counselor, and then the guidance counselor's gonna refer them out. Why couldn't be, we as a school district be referred in to that conversation?
So Dan, my suggestion, when we had the consent form signed, when we offered the parent consent at the beginning of the year, that we would include that release. But also, a- a- as we discuss the community needs, we could discuss if a clinician in the clinic did a suicide assessment on a student, would they then offer that school release in order to communicate with the school to the parent? And that would be the point to where we could assure that communication. It's something that we would have to work through to where that release wouldn't just be sitting in a file. It would be more intentional, like, nope, this is an imminent situation. We need a release sign so we can now communicate with the school. So we'd have to work through the specifics of that. Ultimately, given the parameters of HIPAA versus FERPA, it's that parent's, um, right, um, just like any other clinic would be in the community or otherwise. So I really wanna make that clear, that we can't dictate, you know, necessarily, that, yep, here's a release, um, or dad, you need to sign this so that we can talk to the school.
And I, I'm just looking at it from the perspective of, if we're making that available as a service to the community, there needs to be some reciprocation. That reciprocation would be, if you have a, a mental emergency, the district should know about that. That's all, because it's, I don't care what anybody says about the liability, it always falls on the school district. It's always gonna fall on the district. Whether it's a fiduci- a fiduciary responsibility or a public relations responsibility. I don't, I think we need to cover all the bases before we say, that's it. And I understand HIPAA. I understand FERPA. But I think what my concern is, is it's, this is our building. And there has to be some sort of understanding of that, um, to make myself, I'm speaking for myself, feel more comfortable. I know we can't, but we've gotta figure out how we, we get over that hurdle. You had another question?
Well, just more of another comment, um, and, and it's not exactly apples to apples, but, um, so at Avondale, I asked them, they have about a thousand students, so they're a little bit smaller than us. Um, so for their clinic size, they had one mental health, um, therapist, clinician, and then they had, I think she was PA?
Yeah.
Yep, and then they had the medical assistant. So that was, that was the entirety of their staff. So if it was...
Community health worker is there too.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. So, um, I guess if we're looking at like the mental health piece and the medical support piece, we're talking about, um, only one additional mental health person probably to our already, you know, fairly large staff that, that are our employees, that get our retirement and our benefits. Um, that, that totals twelve people at the high school currently that are Oxford Community High School's employees. Six counselors, three FSLs, two social workers, one psychiatrist. That's twelve people. Um, that's only one other, one additional person. I'm not saying that that person couldn't be the star person, but I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just laying it all out.
And there's nothing to say that that student won't go to one of those eleven people before they go to the clinic?
Well, I would likely say that that student hopefully is involved with those supports at the school level.
I was gonna say, if they don't, that's a whole nother problem.
Yeah, to support, exactly, so...
If they're not coming to their own and they're not letting us help them, and we're not building that rapport with our students and our parents and our staff, that's a whole nother problem.
However, the, yeah, the barrier isn't, and from our community, um, surveys last spring was access to services and wait lists. So that would be what that one person would hopefully help alleviate. So even with our co-located services with Easter Seals, he reached his sixty-four person capacity, as far as client capacity.
I know they are booked.
I think in December or something like that. And they're trying to add another clinician, but that's the issue, is we have those, those mental health staff supporting from an educational perspective. Hopefully, they're identifying those kids and we have contact with them. But where, that one person is a clinician providing treatment and therapy. Um, so that would be the hope, Heather, is that, that's what that person would do, that next level of care. Um...
You have additional?
I have a couple more. Uh, do we know yet if the cost to restructure this classroom is going to be covered by the grant? It was, what, about four hundred thousand dollars to, to do the construction?
Yeah, so, um, right now, we have available, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, currently to spend, um, just depending on when the clinic would be open. Um, we would have an opportunity to utilize some of that funding after October first, too. Uh, how much, I don't know, but, um, we, we did receive the approval to spend a hundred percent of the two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
From last year?
Yeah, on, on the construction. Yeah.
So two, two hundred and seventy-five would be covered, the rest would be paid by the district?
Yeah, whatever, whatever extra.
Okay, and then theoretically, if after a year or however many years, um, legislators change, the community doesn't want this clinic, it's not meeting the five hundred unique visitors per year that it's required to, to, to keep funding, any of those things, and we need to repurpose this classroom back into a classroom, that is not covered at all by the grant. That, that four hundred thousand dollars or whatever the cost the second time will be is completely shouldered by the district. Am I correct in that?
Well, you mean if the grant money goes away?
Right, and the clinic closes.
Right, correct.
Uh, right, so it would be another four hundred thousand dollars to go back to a classroom.
Right, whatever, that would be the district's responsibility to reclass that classroom however you want.
Or whatever the construction cost would be at that time.
Yeah.
I, IBS already gave us a quote to do it, and it was four hundred grand to develop them.
To build it.
On development, it would be, I would, I don't know.
Maybe.
Wouldn't be far off from that.
Plus, you would have resources to sell off.
Medical clinic.
But it wouldn't be much. It wouldn't, wouldn't equate to the four hundred. But it could be, it could be more, it could be less. Um, any further questions, Heather? Okay, um...
Oh, yeah, Erin, I know she had touched on it. Um, I know she's not here, but she was asking, um, about data that shows achievement scores from other health clinics that have been put in. If, do we have that at this point?
What kind of achievement scores? You mean like, um...
As far as the correlation between how the clinic benefits our students, maybe academically, socially, and do you measure any of those things at all?
Uh, we, we, we don't, we don't measure that. Um, we measure, we have our quality measures. For example, we measure the percentage of, um, students that, uh, test positive for depression. And then if they, uh, test positive for depression, there's some criteria we have to do as follow-up. We have to do psychosocial assessment. We have to do another screener. So we have that data from, um, quarter to quarter. We track, uh, we track, um, the amount of immunizations that we give. Um, we track, um, how many visits, how many users, a lot of demographics. We also track, um, how many tests, like how many physicals we do, patient satisfaction scores. Uh, we track our health education outcomes. So, um, we're required to do, kinda pick one area that where the students need, um, additional prevention. So it could be mental health prevention. So we deliver that curriculum. It's all evidence-based, and we, um, we give a survey from pre to post to show the difference before they receive the information and then after. So we do track that quarterly. Um, but in terms of academic success, um, there is a study. So the state and Child and Adolescent Health Division, um, they do ongoing studies in terms of, um, academic performance for those who utilize the clinic, those who do not. Um, the last study that was completed was two thousand fifteen, fourteen or fifteen, and actually I was at, I ran the clinic in, uh, Romulus High School. Uh, we were part of that, um, entire year study, and, um, many, many things were tracked. One of the, um, one of the things that showed that those students who did not utilize the clinic compared to those who did, um, they had better coping skills, better academics, um, their support system, they had better support systems. Um, and then another, uh, another area that improved was those who utilize the clinic. They showed, um, an increase in better health literacy regarding their own health. So, um, that's another benefit of the clinic. We have an opportunity to, um, show the student how to take responsibility for their own health. So, um, you know, when to seek help, um, recognize the symptoms maybe of the flu. So, um, that study showed that those students that, um, did come down to the clinic had better health literacy for the year. And all that was done pre and post. So, um, that study, um, that study was, uh, was done in two, I think it was two thousand fourteen, so...
Okay, thanks. Yeah, if you could send us, um, some of those metrics, that would be also helpful, the ones that you say you keep track of.
Yeah.
Also, do you keep track of adverse events that happen within each clinic, and can you share those with us as well?
Yeah, so we have a, a very strict quality policy, um, peer review policy. So we actually have, um, two committees. Uh, we meet monthly, which is led by our medical director, our chief medical director of all of honor. And then we have a director who is another physician who oversees all of our staff, and she's part of that quality committee too. So, um, any incident, any type of incident report, um, whether it be maybe a student falls, or, um, you know, maybe there's another incident, maybe there's a fight somewhere in the clinic, whatever, we have to fill out incident report, and any type of incident report is reviewed by this committee, and we, we meet monthly. So, um, we also have an internal quality committee that, um, the clinic staff will meet along with myself. So we review, um, all of our quality standards, um, our satisfaction scores. We, um, we have a special project every year that we have to pick to improve. It could be, um, you know, it can improve the environment in the clinic. It could improve, uh, immunization rates. It could inclu- include, uh, how many depression screens that we do for those students who test positive for depression. So, um, we pick an area every year, and we review that on a monthly basis during our staff meetings. So that, that's a requirement by the state. We have to submit, um, meeting minutes. We have to submit all of our quality standards. Uh, we have to submit at the end of the year the results of our chart reviews. So we have what we call a peer review process where each clinician, um, either a nurse practitioner or a PA, will review each other's charts for quality, for thoroughness, make sure that the, all of the follow-through is done, uh, completely. And then we also do case consultations. So, um, on a quarterly basis, each clinician, medical and mental health, will have an opportunity to review difficult cases, um, that is presented. And then they, um, we have to take minutes. So all that is documented. We have to submit results to the state at the end of the year, um, our outcomes. Um, but that's very valuable, um, especially on difficult cases. So... But, um, you know, in terms of policy, we have a very strict quality policy for any incident reporting, no matter what it is, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a lot of notes. So I, I thought it was interesting information. When I was there, I asked the medical personnel, the PA person, I wanted to know what her, what her day-to-day might look like, or what, like a week of synopsis of medical care that she gave. Um, 'cause I thought that was an important piece of information to know, like what, you know, what are you doing? What are you seeing? What are you treating? So I thought that I would share that. Obviously, every day is different for her. Um, but they do a lot of concussion clearance, obviously, probably from sports that happen the night before, games or meets or, or whatever. So she does a lot of that. It's called like a scoring system. She does quite a bit of that, um, and/or fainting. Um, in those cases, obviously, she does always have to contact the parent and suggest a PCP follow-up, meaning a primary care physician follow-up. Um, although she is qualified as a PA to release them or clear them or score them, but, um, she would always recommend them for a PCP follow-up. And then if they scored poorly, she said, then they would either call an ambulance or kind of call the parent and say, do you want me to call an ambulance, or do you wanna take them and, and do that kind of follow-up? That's, that's what those kind of injuries look like for her. Um, she does do some seizure, um, again, si- similar situation with a PCP or an emergency.
Um, she does do some seizure, um, again, si- similar situation with a PCP or an emergency room visit or an ambulance call immediately, depending upon the severity and what's on file. Um, they do not have an X-ray machine or an ultrasound machine, so they don't do um, you know, broken limbs or they don't do any settings or sprains or wraps or anything like that, she's not really qualified to do that. Um, she just doesn't have the technology to do it. Um, they do do a lot of physicals. Um, they do do some um, what they would consider, hold on one second. Um, they do do also confidential services, what 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 falls under confidential services? They do do S T D, S T I testing and services for those, meaning prescribing medications for sexually transmitted diseases, HIV testing and pregnancy testing. So those were some specific, I thought that was very important information to know if we're going to have this, what would, you know, what does their average week look like or average bulk of um, patients look like?
So I'm curious to follow up on that. Todd, you can answer this because I I asked you earlier. Since we're not providing any reproductive health at this clinic, however, you're already past tense, you're pregnant. What does that process look like with the clinic?
Yeah, so um, the way it was explained to us is that anytime that a pregnancy test is given, i- if there's a positive result, um, the parents have to be immediately uh, contacted. And that's because now they're dealing with two individuals potentially, uh, with the mother and the child. And at that point, um, they work with that family in order to to make appropriate referrals for prenatal care or or put them in touch with who they need to get ahold of. Typically, it's not a planned pregnancy, and so even the parents are at kind of a loss, so they're able to walk them through that process.
I think that's an important fact to understand, is that the family decides how they make that decision moving forward. That's that's, that was important to me, I think it's important to a lot of people.
Yeah, and I it just, it was really important for me to understand that, you know, that because those services aren't available, doesn't mean those kids aren't involved in those activities necessarily. And to know that that child, you know, rather than going five or six months without any kind, even being worried, being concerned or not knowing and not not having the appropriate care and the parents not being aware at that point is really concerning. I mean, I'm a father of four and I've got a fifteen-year-old daughter. You know, I always assume I'm going to have a conversation with my child, but I definitely would want to to get the heads up if some, if I wasn't aware of something, so. Um, anyways, thanks for asking that, Dan.
And then the other thing I think is very important that we point out, um, the the clinic does not provide any vaccinations, COVID or anything other than that that is not um, agreed upon by the parent.
Correct, yeah.
That's, I want to be real clear on this. It's not that they don't have them there. It's just that if the parent does not consent, they will not get a vaccination of any kind. Now, if a parent consents, they can certainly get the vaccination, am I, am I right on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And not only um, do we require consent for all vaccines, um, if we do have a consent on file, the um, cl- uh, clinician will call the parent to double-check. Because sometimes parents can change their minds and and parents can revoke and and cancel a consent at all times. So let's say that consent was signed, you know, I don't know, maybe, 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 you know, six months ago, a year or whatever, that that clinician will call the parent, say, hey, just wanna, you know, your child came down for the flu vaccine, I just want to make sure you still consent to this. And sometimes uh, the parent changes their mind, you know, and and maybe forgets to revoke the consent or um, so that's a safeguard that we have in place.
And and I think it's important that we, that that parent had that conversation because a lot of times their student may not know of their own health conditions that they have that would.
Yeah.
That a vaccine would be counterproductive and make them even more ill.
Sure, yeah.
That is that, I'm looking at that as a very good strategy. Because the parent, you know, the parent's gonna know, or I would presume that they would know.
Correct, and and even before that vaccine is given, we're required to print off a V I S, a vaccine information statement. Um, and that's a requirement through our our state V F C of vaccines for children. But it's a common practice that that parent has to receive that, and we have to document that before that's even given. Um, and we we have to um, provide an opportunity for that parent to uh, ask questions too. And we have to verify that they fully understand the symptoms. It'd be the same just walking into the doctor's office, before that vaccine is given, uh, a V I S statement has to be printed up, that information has to be given to the parent, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, getting back to um, your question about positive pregnancy, you know, not only do we have to notify the parent or guardian, but we're required to follow up with that parent to make sure they have appropriate prenatal care, make sure, you know, any referral. Um, sometimes parents don't follow up, you know, and and there has been situations where the parents haven't. So we're required to do any referral, any follow-up, we require to follow up with that parent or that guardian just to make sure because um, we're going to do whatever it it takes to uh, for the the health of that child. So if that means follow-up, making sure, phone call, if we have to, you know, we have to call every day, you know, until we get ahold of that parent and make sure that um, they're getting the care of that, you know, any any care. Could be a referral to the cardiologist. If we uh, if we suspect a heart problem, um, and we uh, call the parent, we have, we have to make sure that parent follows through with that um, with that referral and that appointment. And we'll assist, if they don't have uh, you know, any ideas of where to go, we'll make recommendations based on um, what they, you know, what the parent would like in terms of a a cardiologist or any specialist, um, and give them options of who they can go see, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. To add to that real quick, so there was a, uh, one of the slides talked about helping with Medicare, um, would.
Medicaid?
Uh, Medicaid, sorry, with Medicaid, sign up.
Yep.
Sorry, it's a whole, that's a big difference. Um, um, but um, you know, as we're talking about young parents too, um, do, is this part, um, would you be able to help? Uh, maybe students sign up for this, maybe get involved with WIC, get involved in
Yeah.
other kinds of programs like that, because it's such, it's so overwhelming, um, and even in other situations, you know, trying to figure out how to get into the system for the first time is really overwhelming, and it could be for any reason, it could be for a number of reasons. Um, and sometimes people don't know who to talk to and they're embarrassed and they don't want to call their neighbor.
Yeah, that's why we have our community health worker to help navigate that whole Medicaid, uh, WIC, um, total wraparound service, the very confusing. Um, that's why we have the community health worker that will be present. So they can help onsite, assist a family member uh, to apply for Medicaid. So um, to answer questions, to physically be there, they can help them over the phone or they can zoom with the family if the family would like to be at home, uh, trying to uh, sign up for Medicaid. But um, any type of assistance, you know, these us, community health workers are trained to help with all the social determinants of health, whether it be food insecurities, if their electricity gets turned off. Um, you know, anything that provides a barrier for wellness, these C H Ws are are trained, so. Um, and that's becoming, unfortunately, that's becoming more of a common practice in our, you know, everywhere really, so.
I think that's really a big piece of health that we, that isn't so measurable because it's not cuts and scrapes and sickness, but um, those are really big factors in student learning.
Yeah, most most definitely, so.
That brought up a point that um, Erin actually was talking about too, so I wanted to make sure. So ninety-eight point four percent of all of our Oxford students have insurance. Do you have the payer mix of what that looks like, whether it's private Medicaid? Do you know?
For Oxford?
For Oxford.
I I don't know that, no, no, um.
So it's some form of insurance, it might not be, it might not be insurance through uh, through our work or it might, um, it could be Medicare, Medicaid, it could be something, but okay.
Coverage of some sort, but I don't have the breakdown of.
Whatever kind of insurance, whether it be commercial insurance, Medicaid, even if they don't have insurance, um, we'll still provide that service. So um, let's say a family, a student comes in and the the parent says, you know, I, my insurance got canceled or I'm unemployed, um, I have no insurance, we'll still see that student, no matter what. And and nobody, no student, no family will ever get a bill in the mail. So uh, let's say we do a a comprehensive physical, we um, you know, maybe required a couple immunizations. Um, we did um, maybe a um, a assessment, um, because they had a um, pain in their stomach. You know, whatever how that is coded, you know, whether you have insurance or not, um, they will not get a bill. So even those without insurance will not get a bill in the mail, they will not be responsible for any deductibles, co-pays. If they want to pay a co-pay, they can, you know, if they, if they have a co-pay and, you know, and we do, um, we do get that sometimes where parents uh, are so grateful for what we do, they said, you know, well, here's my, here's twenty dollars. It's kind of like a donation, but in reality, reality, it could be a co-pay. Um, but they're not required, and and the state sets that up. Um, any urgent care, no matter where you go, you're not going to find that. But in our um, in our clinics, it's mandatory that um, we require no barriers and sometimes money is one of them. And uh, quite honestly, um, you know, they don't even have to show proof of income, they don't have to to show their W twos. It's just basically, you know, what, you know. So we'll, we'll say, you know, well, you know, i- if the parent asks that, you know, am I required to pay this? We'll say, no, you're not, you you can if you want, but you're not required, so. Yeah.
So to to piggy, to piggyback on that for billing, because I asked a lot of questions when we were there, so to piggyback on that, they, you guys, if I, if if my son comes and he has private insurance, you're going to bill my private insurance. If they're on Medicaid, then they're gonna, you're gonna bill that.
Correct.
And then if they have neither of those, you're picking up the tab.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and um, we cannot bill any type of insurance, including Medicaid, without consent. So let's say on that consent form, there's services that the parent consents to. Um, there's also, they have to consent to bill their insurance if they have it. Uh, they can decline, you know, they could, they could consent for, you know, the parent can consent for whatever they want. They can even write on that consent, I consent to um, have a physical done uh, for my child, have this immunization, however, I don't consent to bill my insurance. Uh, and that's okay, we just, we just won't bill the insurance and the grant will pay for it. Uh, doesn't happen a whole lot, but sometimes it does, especially.
There are some confidential services that would be covered under that scenario.
Cor- correct, so um, any confidential service, if they have a Medicaid plan, then um, we will bill the Medicaid plan because there's no E O Bs that are sent home. Any commercial insurance for a confidential service, um, we would not bill. We would not bill that commercial insurance, so.
All right, I'm, one more question for me. Is there an age other than eighteen that a student can consent for themselves or they always have to have parental consent? Did I ask that question right?
Yeah, so you're asking, is there any be, anything under eighteen that they can consent for themselves, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so um, it depends on the student. So um, a confidential service, uh, they can consent if they're under eighteen for some services. Um, however, the per public code, the provider, whether it be mental health or medical, they, they are not required to honor that service to that minor if they they request a confidential service, if they want to consent on their own. So it is up to the discretion of the provider to make that determination. Um, it's not mandatory.
And would that fall under, your discretion would fall under our agreement? Where consent would have to be given by a parent?
Um, if we have to follow public code, uh, state law. So even if you mandate a consent for a minor who requests a confidential service, we would have to follow that that law, that public health code, and that's, that's really true no matter where that sixteen-year-old goes. If that sixteen-year-old goes to their PCP and requests a confidential service and the provider, uh, through their professional judgment, um, honors that, then then they have to provide that. So it it does happen, it has happened, um, and I've been leading school-based health centers for, since two thousand ten. There are si- some situations where that provider said, you know, based on A, B, and C, professionally and clinically, I don't feel comfortable honoring your, you know, wanting you to consent. And they did refuse that service, um, based on their professional judgment. But let's say the school district says it's mandatory that uh, students have to have a consent. Uh, anything besides a, anything besides confidential service, uh, unless they're eighteen, you know, we cannot provide. But that, the public uh, state law would trump anything the district puts in place.
So I don't want to just assume that I know what confidential services would be, so would would those fall under?
Yeah, so it would be pregnancy testing, um, HIV testing and counseling.
Okay.
Um, S T I testing
Okay.
and treatment, and then um, mental health counseling. So um, that's, that's not mental health medication, that's just mental health counseling.
Okay.
And with mental health counseling, there's um, some restrictions. You you, you have to be age fourteen to consent on your own. And we can only provide up to twelve sessions or or four months of therapy or counseling. Once that four months and and first one day hits, or that thirteen session hit, then if that student um, would like to continue counseling, uh, and they're under eighteen, then we have to get parental consent. There's no way, shape, or form, um, you know, unless it's an emergency. You know, no way, shape, or form, we can continue counseling without that parental consent.
Okay, and that's the umbrella of those?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's uh, that's state public health code, so.
Pardon? Correct. Yeah, the understanding that we had was, what, um, sexual orientation conversations, um, reproductive health conversations, that does not fall under those umbrellas, correct?
No.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Follow-up? Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna have our public comment at this point, unless you have something else, Todd. Um, if you want, if if anything that was covered that was part of your comment, you feel free to grab your card um, and not have us go go through that. If you still want to go through it, it's been covered, you still want to go through it, that's fine. Um, if you can grab those, if we could take a quick five-minute break, um, that would be great. Yep, and uh, just so you're aware, it's three-minute time, uh, James is going to keep the time here. This little, the little the little yellow light right here will will flash. When you get to your time limit, we're going to give you like ten, fifteen seconds to wrap up your thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me come up here and speak tonight, my name is Marcy Andricus.
Oh, one thing, can, do you hear from there? Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you for letting me come up here and speak, my name is Marcy Andricus. I had written some comments before, um, we had the presentation, so I'm going to be a little bit jumbled because some of them were were answered. But I do have a few concerns that I just want to bring to the board to make sure as you're going through your due diligence that you get these answered for myself and the community. If you, the board now make rules that the um, the clinic has to follow, what happens when the board changes? Can that be changed? Who's going to be monitoring what the honor clinic is doing? They say they're not doing services, but can we verify that? Is there any kind of accountability? Who has the final say when policy is concerned? If they want to enact something the district doesn't want to, or if state law changes, um, like the services available, like sex orientation services? um, like the services available, like sex orientation services, um, who, who gets the final ruling on that? Can we put this in place and that just gets yanked out from under us? If this is a government-funded program, as Amanda had mentioned, they have to have a certain number of new person visits, not repeat visits from one person, what happens when that doesn't get met? You have to open up to the community to get those numbers met? So that will be one question to have answered. Um, let's see here. Heather had mentioned the mental health resources, there would only be one additional person coming on. If they're not part of what you guys are putting in place to truly evaluate our students, that truly is not a benefit for us, I don't believe, so I hope you will look at that very, very, um, closely. There was also mention that, um, the schools, that the clinic could not necessarily, what we had seen in the agenda that is posted online, that you guys could possibly be signing, that they won't be responding to nine-one-one needs, so what we're being told tonight is different than what is in the report that's online for us to be looking at. Um, there's also other services that are listed in that report that, in theory, you guys could sign, um, that have not been mentioned here. Reproductive health is one of them, it's listed in there, and we're being told that's not. Um, also, they, in this agenda that you guys could possibly sign, that's available for everybody to look at online, it's identifying use that can be treated at this clinic as anywhere from five to twenty-one years of age. I don't know a twenty-one-year-old senior, so do those people just get to walk in? That would be a concern. I consider, um, STD testing, reproductive health, or sex, sexual orientation type of questions, or procedures, or services, so, not sure where we're able to do that and where that line's being drawn. Um, let's see here. I guess a really, a big concern would be the accountability, and I've also heard that you would be able to advertise to the students via flyers, or health fairs, or things like that, that might make them aware of services that they might be able to get, that the parents might not want them to be knowing about, or to be getting without them being made aware of it first. So I think that the parents should have to be involved in any kind of outreach that the students are being marketed to. Um, and in closing, if I can, I just ask you to vote no on this clinic, because there are just too many variables. Our students need to heal from everything that they've been through already, there's too many unknowns here, we, we need to focus on, the most important thing is, right now is in Oxford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercy. Um, Todd, would, no, I'm, Todd, would you mind, I, I see you're writing down some notes, if there's things that need to be covered, um, since Vicki is not here, could you make sure that we're covering those and make sure that we get some answers to those, uh, direct questions? Um, okay, Rich Schneider?
Hi, my name's Rich Schneider, I'm a Brandon Township resident, I had, uh, three students that came through the Oxford schools. Um, my question is for, I've got a number of things, first, the clinic is not-for-profit, um, who pays for that? Apparently, it's a Department of Health and, uh, Human Services grant, so essentially, we are paying for it, one way or the other, nobody's working for free here. Um, I gotta wonder about the immunization practices, yes, they went through quite a few things, uh, parental consent on the child age, um, if the children, if the parents give the consent earlier in the year, is it just carte blanche, that the kids can get a vaccine if they need, if they, they believe they need one, when it might go against what the parents believe, or do they point the kids towards a clinic that maybe does? That's one question. Um, my family's had experience with some of, uh, shall we say, um, psychological drugs that have been given by doctors to our kids, such as Folklund and Wellbutrin, and I gotta tell you from experience, it did not help those kids, so this is something we have to watch out for. Um, maybe ask the thoughts on fluoride, that now is being reported as actually lowering kids' IQs during their developmental point. That's part of, unfortunately, research I've had to do because of some of these experiences, so I hope these things are taken seriously. Um, also, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of things about causing the increasing prevalence of mental health issues in the schools, and I gotta wonder if, um, possibly we've got some issues that we're not addressing, such as chemicals in the air, biological factors, whether it's parasites or something, it seems like no one's jumping to the root. Um, one of the things that I've run across is graphene oxide, that's used to sterilize some of the things for like the PCR test, can pass the blood-brain barrier and be excited with five G cell phone signal frequencies, that's an EMF thing. There's plenty of that around, it's, just because we see it, doesn't mean it's there, and doesn't mean it's affecting our kids. So these are just things I wanted to bring up, and hopefully people are looking at it, not just going to treat symptoms, but looking for the source, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Broder, and really, I just want to make more of a comment on, I've heard a lot about getting vaccines and up-to-date, and we can get them immunized, and I heard them say that you're supposed to get a form, and you're supposed to call a parent, but as a, I have a child with an autoimmune disease, um, every urgent care I've ever been to, I mean, we spent months and months at U of M, um, she's now through school, but she could not be vaccinated, I mean, unless we wanted to put her right back at U of M. Um, and, but I can't tell you how many urgent cares and doctor's offices, those forms, they're telling me those forms exist, but if I had not been standing there, they've tried to bring her up-to-date all the time, and I feel like this is a really scary slope of a parent who's dealt with life and death for their child, because she couldn't tell you why she didn't have them, even at twenty-one, she cannot fully tell you why, she's not supposed, she knows she has this juvenile dermatomyositis, and she knows it's a form of muscular dystrophy, and she knows that she was told not to, but she could have been so easily pressured into it, and I just think there's so many times, if it's this accessible in a school, that there's so many things, and I think you could have, she could have swung it under mental health nowadays, and every doctor or nurse I ever talked to really wanted to do that, and to tell you, held out reams of paper, and it, it's, I, I don't like the accessibility without a parent there, and I know you're saying it has all these things, but all those other places I went supposedly had those precautions in place, and the only precaution that stopped it was the one that's standing in front of you right now. So, really, I beg you to vote no.
Thank you. Dan Bowers, did I get that right? Okay, no?
Bo.
Bo, I'm sorry.
No problem. This is a little bit out of my normal, I certainly don't want to talk down to anyone here, including the Honor Health people, so that doesn't come off like that. So, I'm a Vietnam veteran, retired law enforcement, and when I look at this whole conversation, the one player that was totally absent was the taxpayer. Not, not a mention from Honor Health. Honor Health is more or less an extension of the, uh, One Health Institute type of, uh, format at Michigan State University, that's all World Economic Forum. If you know anything about the World Economic Forum, they're not our friend, they are not our friends, they are here to do a lot of harm to this country. So, I'm very encouraged, though, to listen to the board, your very parental right, your tone, your words, your questions, you are definitely thinking about the parents, and that's a big deal. Um, but Honor Health, would they, absent a grant, would they even be here? We're paying for this, for them to provide this service, which makes me think that the beautiful, uh, city of Oxford doesn't have the practitioners, the people that are in private practice, that are grinding every day to get, do, do these same services? There's, there's not enough of them, apparently. For, for you to even consider this, that's a slap in the face to all those private practitioners out there, in my opinion. So I just want to, you know, encourage you to vote no. There's acts of omission, there's acts of commission, and then, when you're talking about children, and we're talking about our children, right? If you go back to the beginning of time, irrespective of religion, creed, color, doesn't matter, the natural tendency is to protect the young, period. And we have our kids and our grandkids right on Front Street with this, what, what really amounts to is a national health effort to take over our entire health sys-, uh, our entire health system. It's coming across as a private enterprise, but it's funded by the government, and that means it's funded by us, so thank you.
The community was made aware of the government-grant-funded health clinic as a possibility through published literature in October two thousand and twenty-one. Since that time, no information regarding the clinic has been made available to the community, other than through recent school board meetings, which are generally verily, excuse me, very poorly attended. When information is withheld, it's hard to have an opinion or provide feedback. Why has this information not been widely circulated? If you were confident that this clinic would be well-received, wouldn't you be shouting it, uh, its praises from the rooftop? Regarding location and lack of available space, as the school is already overcrowded, can you guarantee that teachers will not be displaced from their current classrooms and/or have to share space? One parent of a special-needs student shared with me recently that their student is still awaiting appropriate room accommodations. With regard to clinic hours, will students be scheduling their own appointments during class instruction time, interrupting teachers and students? Which will take precedence, class or therapy? What about student privacy? Many students don't want their peers to know they're going to an appointment. It's reported that students take advantage of bathroom breaks. Won't opening a clinic inside the school offer an additional excuse for anyone looking to avoid class? Security measures. The school board has the option to vote to make the clinic accessible to the general public at any time via a vote. In fact, there are currently two contracts written, one proposed for high school students and one written for all district students. Government-grant-funded clinic. Section one point three of the proposed, uh, contract, master final, Oxford, inter-agency agreement, as stated. Billing. Honor shall have the sole right to bill and collect payment for services provided at or through the health centers. The cost of services shall be clearly identified to students, parents, guardians, and families before providing services. If the clinic is funded through a government grant, why are there costs associated with services? What about businesses being taken away, or, excuse me, what about business being taken away from our own community? What cost incentive is, is Oxford Community Schools receiving, and how will the money be distributed? Medical and mental health records may or may not be accessible to parents. Minors have certain privacy rights according to the state of Michigan. This is a statewide law and not specific to this situation. However, most minors do not schedule and take themselves to medical appointments without parents being present. A clinic inside the high school makes medical privacy for minors not a possibility, but a fact. For parents hoping that the clinic will put an end to the bombardment of emails sent by Oxford Community Schools alerting them to medical emergencies, section one point five of the proposed contract, master final, Oxford, inter-agency agreement, as stated, the teen health center shall not respond to school medical and mental health emergencies and shall not provide emergency services. And finally, zero liability for Honor Community Health and Oxford Community Schools in section three point two of the proposed contract, master final, Oxford, inter-agency agreement, as stated. Subject to the foregoing and to the extent permitted by law, the parties agree to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless each other from any and all liability arising out of or in any way related to any party's performance of services during the treatment of this agreement, including any liability resulting from intentional or reckless acts, or the acts of the employees or agents of a party here too. This clinic is an example of blatant government overreach, and this board is its last line of defense. Thank you.
Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak tonight. Let me start by saying that I have serious concerns about a government health clinic on school property. This is one more step toward turning our children into the state's children. With the recent passage of ultra-left-wing legislation that has taken away many parental rights, coupled with woke ideology founded in fantasy, I for one, do not want to take, make it any easier for the government or government schools and medicine to have more control over children. If another pandemic occurs and the government decides to make immunizations mandatory, I don't want to have a clinic inside the school so the children can be marched down without parental knowledge. I believe that parents have the absolute right to direct the children's medical care unless there are serious extenuating circumstances as determined by a judge after a fair hearing. Now, I would like to call your attention to what this board is being asked to sign, and who will be making the metal, medical decisions for your sons and daughters. Now, this has all to do with the confidentiality of, uh, services. Uh, one point, one point two deals with the promote, with promotion and education services, and I quote, "Honor and the supervising physician will decide on treatment and referral protocols." One point, one point three deals with mental health services. I quote, "Honor and the supervising physician will decide on treatment and referral protocols." One point, one point four deals with referrals to mental health agencies. Honor and the supervising physician will decide on treatment and referral protocols. One point, one point five deals with case management services for complex and chronic conditions. I quote again, "Honor and the supervising physician will decide on treatment and referral protocols." This is not acceptable. Do we really want strangers who we haven't even met making these decisions for our children? Parents have a right, and indeed an obligation, to direct the medical and mental health treatment for their kids. Maybe they want to get a second opinion, maybe they don't like or agree with the staff at the clinic, they have the right to go somewhere else. I have always felt that you go to a professional in a field for diagnosis and consultation. The individual then has the option of following the professional's advice or going elsewhere for another opinion. This agreement takes away that option. The way I see it, the state or the schools don't have a right to tell parents what to do. If they screw up the diagnosis or the treatment, and that child suffers long-term disability, it will be the parents that take care of them, not the school or the clinic. There are other issues and questions as well. I would like to see the form you have to sign to authorize it, for one thing, I'd like to see what it says. Please vote no. Thank you.
Sorry. Your time's up.
Promise?
Yeah.
Kit Grabowski?
Obviously, I'm probably going to repeat quite a bit of what has already been brought up. Um, I, my first question has recently come to my brain, and that is, who exactly defines the fact that we are an underserved community? Ninety-eight percent, she said it herself, ninety-eight percent of our students have insurance, which means they have access to medical health services via their parents taking them to an, an appointment. Parents need to be parents, they need to take them to their appointments, they signed on to that when they became parents. all this information to us do not appear to have read their own agreements. They have contradicted both of the agreements numerous times tonight. Specifically, the sexual stuff, the payment stuff, and more importantly, the fact that they will not respond to emergencies. It says it in their own agreement, that you are expected to sign. The way it is written out, it has it set for our superintendent and for you, Mr. Alessandro, to sign it, the way it is written out. You can't sign that. There's no way, in good conscience, I could see you signing that. It contradicts everything that they've said. Unless you have it in writing, they can do whatever the hell they want, excuse the language. I would really, this goes back to November 30th and prior. We need to see the schools' emergency protocols. We need to see them written out, not in some handbook that is ignored. And I'm not kidding, everybody ignores it. We don't know what your protocols were, we don't know what they are now, other than we are continuously getting notifications of minor incidences. And in all honesty, unless it involves my child and something that requires life-or-death treatment, I'm really tired of listening to all of those particular things. And I have kids that have severe allergies. My daughter has a nut allergy, I get it. But we don't need to know that there's three medical emergencies in a day. It just isn't necessary. As far as the clinic goes, I was shocked to hear the price, honest to God, $400,000. And it's going to cost us half of that outside of the grant money. Take that money, hire some nurses for every single one of our schools. That's what we need. We need nurses on our property. Get another social worker that knows how to do the Medicaid applications and things of that nature. Hire two, three more people that we actually need. Don't put the government in charge of our kids' health. They will kill our kids.
Donna Blake.
I am very concerned about the proposed government healthcare clinic possibly being installed in the high school for so many reasons. But because I believe that you've already received so many emails listing the pros and cons, I am going to simply pick one reason why this is not a good idea. I would love and so appreciate our Oxford School System to remain within the core competency of safely educating our children well. Just do that, that one core competency. I don't believe we're currently doing that, and we need to refocus. Can we stick to reading, writing, arithmetic, science, home ec, gym, music, and art, just to name a few classes, without getting into all of the grand political issues of the day? The Oxford Board entertains every single political issue before it assures that our students are well-educated and safe. I'm sure that you're all thinking that we do that every day, that we can walk and chew gum, that it won't take much to install a medical clinic, that this is not political, that we must do this so the kids can learn. But there are so many children without medical care. That's not true. All the lies you tell yourselves to justify bringing in a politically-charged government healthcare clinic, the truth is, it's not your business, it's not your core competency. You cannot be everything to everybody. What about a religious space for those students who may need spirituality in their lives? It's the parent's job to take care of the medical and spiritual needs of their children. So with all due respect, I think you really need to butt out and stay in your lane. If you think Oxford Schools is doing such a great job safely educating our children, then consider what the parents, students, and teachers are talking about out there. It's been over a year, and we still haven't received an accounting of what happened on 11/30. Little Sarah isn't learning how to read, write, and do arithmetic. The assignments have so much to do with her feelings. The parent claims that the problem is with the schools. The teacher claims that the problem is at home. The board and administrators will just do whatever they want, as a relationship with the parents and students are so poor. Do you know how many students are now being homeschooled? Oxford High School has been well-known for an ongoing bullying situation. And as we saw today by Mr. Brown, I think it was, their reading scores are not back to where they need to be. I could go on here, but I think you get my point. You can approve all of those beliefs and discussions listed above, first, in a huge way, by focusing on your core competency, by focusing just on safely educating our children. Thank you.
Evelyn Archer.
Thank you, all of you, for serving. I appreciate it. I'm at 750 Lakes Edge Drive, and everything I've heard today, I agree with in terms of public participation. I won't repeat everything, but several things come to mind, and it's the idea of future state requirements, I think Marcy mentioned it. We have to consider the possible deleterious effects of what the state will require in the future of a government-owned health clinic. You know, once we accept a grant, you know, then the state, the government, will get its tentacles into us. And we don't know what will be, what will come in the future in terms of what they will require. Will they require immunizations? And I heard from Honor, you know, if we provide them, there are a lot of blurry explanations. Same with blurry explanations in terms of insurance and who will be billed. But anyway, state future requirements is a huge thing that I'm not sure we can predict. Think about the principle of subsidiarity, and that would be solving a problem at the lowest possible level, and it would dictate that it is the parents, the family, that provides a student's healthcare, not the school, not the government. I agree that school, schooling, education is the board's and teachers' main mission. It's not necessarily medical healthcare, it's not necessarily food insecurity. We can't solve all of our economic ills. And my question is, should we? So I'd like to encourage you to get back to, and vote no, and get back to, education is our main mission. This would be another level of cumbersome government if this is approved. It's another layer of government. You know, we hear about the child going in, then the clinic, and then, you know, the clinic talking to the parents, to the doctors, and back to the parents, and clinic, and the paperwork, and all the consultations and the reviews. This all costs money. It's not free, and it inevitably comes onto the taxpayers' back. It actually violates free-market economic policy as well, because this is providing free space, which isn't so free because, you know, we heard about the $400,000 cost. But where is the justice and fairness to the other medical clinics, the offices, the urgent cares in around Oxford? And does this also make the possibility of us getting a hospital in this area less likely? I could go on and on. Thank you for listening, appreciate it. Please vote no, or don't approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Jones.
for everyone in the room. Everything is political, and I think on both sides of the aisle, and I think we're really all doing a huge disservice to our children by bringing politics into this from either side. So, let's go back, and I apologize that I was writing frantically. Man. Okay, first of all, let's keep the conspiracy theories out of this, we have real problems, let's just focus on that, let's start there. Tonight, I want to give you credit for the fact that when you engaged with Honor Health, that was the most productive conversation I've seen at a board meeting in a long time. And the reason being, there was back and forth, there was communication, and that's what we've been lacking for a very long time. If you want to have this clinic, the first step should have been to have a town hall with the entire community. Now, I do have some concerns about having the clinic. I will say they are not the concerns of most of the other people in the room that I've heard tonight. I do have concerns about the communication on mental health between the district and between the clinic, those are valid concerns. Our lives are forever changed, and we are parents who will fiercely defend our children against any obstacle. That's where we're at as parents right now, because our lives have been changed. And we don't care about the politics, this is about our kids. So, it's just incredibly frustrating, I see all these people here talking that they're here to defend the kids, but where have you been for over a year, when we've been trying to defend our kids? You don't get to just come in here, "I'm sorry" today and act like you do. I'm sorry. Trust is a big issue with the district, though. You're taking on this ginormous undertaking, and we still have no trust with you. We haven't even gotten the guidepost report to know what the failures were. Maybe we should start with that. I'm not opposed to a clinic altogether, because I do believe in mental health and medical for everyone. I think everybody does deserve that, I think that's a right, okay? But we're allowed to have concerns. So, my biggest concern is, can you, as a board, as a school district, handle this undertaking? Not that the clinic services, those aren't my concerns. And so, you know, we say it's not going to be in the 200 hallway, but it's pretty damn close. And then we do have concerns about it becoming public. So, we need the guarantee, we need a town hall where all of this is decided back and forth for everyone to feel comfortable. Real quick, I just want to say, I think a compromise here is, it seems like the mental health is the main issue that we're needing. First of all, I think we need to poll the students on what their needs are, and a compromise, I think, would be just doing the mental health clinic, get the community comfortable with something like this, if we're going to do it, and see what problems arise, and then maybe look at a full clinic. I think that would be at least a compromise. Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just have a couple things, it'll be quick. The first is, I heard the board mention earlier in the meeting about possibly letting the community speak earlier than normal about the health clinic. I've been at board meetings with Tate's family and Hannah's family and other victims' families, where they've been forced to wait three and a half, four hours to speak. I'd ask that you show those families the same graciousness, they offer to speak earlier. I've been at meetings where it's broke my heart how we've treated these families when they come to these board meetings. Secondly, I wanted to remind you that my son, my youngest son, and many of his classmates will be graduating on May 18th. You are running out of time to look these kids in the eyes and tell them what was broken on November 30th that caused a shooting that took the lives of many of their friends and classmates and left others injured. You are running out of time to do this. I know that he is losing hope, my own child, that he will ever get answers. He has moved on from this high school in so many ways. He's doing wonderful, but he has moved on in so many ways for negative reasons. He will not look back on his high school senior year and junior year with fondness. I can tell you that, and I know many of his friends won't either. And as we talk about the physical and mental health of these kids in the future, do not forget these kids from last year that graduated and are in college now, some struggling, and the rest of the kids that have yet to come through this high school. Do not forget them. Many of them are struggling, and even if they're not struggling, they deserve to hear from you. They deserve to know you are still thinking about this, talking about this, wondering about this. These kids, many of them feel like you are waiting for them to age out and move on. That's not why we're in education. These buildings, they don't belong to you, they don't belong to us, they belong to these kids. Please remember that. Thank you.
Brian Cooper.
Okay. He's not around the corner at all? Okay. 6B, moving on to our next item, 6B. See, Oxford Addison Youth Assistance Volunteer Approval. We don't have any presentation for that, however, we do have a motion on the floor. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Heather. Move to approve the resolution to support the Oxford Addison Youth Assistance Volunteers Appointed to the Board of Directors is presented.
Is there support? Support James? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I could have put it in discussion. Can I just make a quick comment?
Of course.
I do believe that everybody, I was not able to get to the luncheon, but I know that they have an awards program, the Oxford Addison Youth Assistance, it's coming up. I think it's in May. I did get to attend it last year, I believe we all got an invite in email. I strongly suggest that if you have the time and can do it, that you attend that, it's just wonderful to see what these kids are doing.
Can we take a, can we look at one that is and make sure at least one of us can try to attend, if not all of us, because it is during the day? So if anybody has some free time during the day, on that day, I'd like to have at least one person. The 12th of May. I will be in Illinois, so.
Yes, yeah, Friday the 12th.
Okay. Let's, if we could send an email out to me, see if we can get at least one person. Thank you, Mary. Item C, the 2023-2024 Oakland Schools' Proposed General Fund Budget Presentation.
I can give you the highlights.
Yep, the highlights or the lowlights?
Yes. Yeah, so, what, I went to the meeting last week for LEA delegates. They talked about some of the funding that was coming up, they're expecting a 5% property tax increase, no heavily rollback. They look at other revenues. So the ISD, the Intermediate School District, does just the same thing that we're going to be doing in budgeting. We're looking forward to seeing what expectations we have of funds coming in. Stated looks like other revenues. They are proposing no staffing changes, no FTE changes. They are expecting salary increases of 2.5% to non-union salary schedules, steps for all staff included. The exciting MIPSers blended rate at 30.2%, that was for you, Sam, I think you're still There is a benefit, I'm sorry, an increase in health benefits, and there is an increase in some of the services that they purchase. They have been, I can tell you, for our district, just from what we've been hearing from our administration over the last few months, Oakland Schools has done an amazing job stepping up for us with the SEL curriculum. up for us with the SEL curriculum, with the mental health, with answering phone calls, it seems, whenever we call. And they bring us trained staff, they help us with our, they help us with our training. And they're, they don't make any money off of this. It's not a for-profit. I was just looking for the breakdown of.
It's a budget line item, correct?
Of what they're spending. I'm sorry?
It's a budget line item, expenditure.
Well, they get, they get their money from the state.
Correct.
And other funding sources.
Whatever that falls under, it would fall, they delegate how that money gets appropriated.
Absolutely. So they spend, let's see, 93% is spent in direct services. 93% of their budget is in direct services, to districts, to students. Not everybody has an auto shop in their high school. You know, we have, they have the technical campuses. We had somebody winning an award last week from one of the technical campuses. So they provide a great service. Just bringing that to everybody's attention, and I think we'll vote, we'll look at voting on that next meeting.
I have to confirm what Oakland Schools, you know, they have a timeline.
Right.
Much like our budget needs to be done by the 30th of June, I think theirs needs to be done by May.
You have some meetings in April, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
So if you have any other questions, you can ask me if anybody's more interested about what's going on in Oakland Schools. There are a couple of Oakland Schools board members who would be willing to come out and talk with us some more if people are interested in all the services that they provide.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Finance and Operations, number seven, Mr. Barna. I don't know that there's necessarily a presentation that you have. You've made it last meeting. It was for a vehicle. Is there any questions for Mr. Barna after you had the questions last week?
We saw, we saw another vehicle.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, at the high school.
That was not on here?
No, that's not on there. That Z06 2023 is not on.
If that gets on there, we're gonna have some serious questions for Mr. Barna.
I saw him at.
I just thought he had fancy shoes. Now he's gonna have fancy cars.
Yeah, the auto shop, the auto shop, he had.
General Motors come in.
General Motors come with all their fancy stuff, and I got a chance to go, and I said to Sam, "How can we get this on the, on the agenda?" And then somehow we get to use it.
It's beautiful.
A joke, of course. Good grief.
Don't throw that out in the universe.
Right, no, no.
It wouldn't carry a lot of tools or ladders. That's the unfortunate part, yeah.
But it would get to the job site real fast.
It sure would.
Okay. Were there any questions for Sam? About the vehicle? Looking at it, it is much more practical for a district-wide service vehicle.
It is.
Than what we have.
It is.
And the other one can be repurposed for snow plowing.
That's correct.
Other things that wouldn't require tools being hauled from point A to point B that would, you know.
Right.
As we know, in Michigan, weather can change in a heartbeat, and you can have $20,000 worth of tools, or $5,000 worth of tools in the back of a truck, and they get all wet, and not that they'll be ruined, but it's problematic.
This truck that's currently being utilized is a 2016. It's in great condition. We maintain our vehicles very well, but it will be repurposed if approval is given tonight for this new vehicle, this new box truck, if you will. That current truck, that 2016 GMC, will be repurposed again, and it will be used as well, as much as possible, but it will be focused also during the winter time for, again, as you mentioned, snow plowing, as well as putting a salt box on back. And we will then, if that is the case, have three trucks that are equipped for salting in-house, as well as snow plowing. So we don't have to rely as heavily on outside agencies to do that for us in the district.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to.
Especially when we, when we have those close areas proximity-wise to the schools that may be used a little bit earlier.
That's right.
Because there might be an activity going on, or even on a weekend, we can make sure that it's adequately salted.
That's right.
And we don't have to, like you said, rely on somebody else. Okay, is there, there's a motion, if anybody would like to make it? Heather?
Move to approve the purchase of a vehicle from Jim Reels Friendly Chrysler Dodge for the amount of $49,290.
Is there support? Support Amanda? And this is, I'm just gonna ask the question, it's through the bid process?
Yes, that's my deal.
Yes.
So it's the competitively priced, it's for school districts and municipalities.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, Dr. Williman.
Good evening. Last meeting, we met in closed session in accordance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act to review the updated emergency operation plans for the district, so I'm here this evening for you all to vote on it.
Move to approve the Oxford Community Schools Emergency Operations Plan.
Is there support? Support James? Any discussion? I want to point out that there was a question about our plans. This emergency operating plan, by law, is covered under, is protected document. It's protected for every school district in this country. So this is not something that we can show. We obviously, just like in any other thing, you don't want to give your game plan to how you operate in an emergency situation to the general public. It's not best practices, and it's covered by federal law. Am I federal or state?
Both state and federal.
State and federal law, okay. Any further discussion? Amanda?
I just want to add that I know we can't really talk about it, or what was in it, or anything like that, but I do just want to say that Dr. Williman is incredibly knowledgeable, and going through it was amazing to watch her work, and the amount that she put into that, and how robust and thorough it really is, is remarkable. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I agree. Very well done. Thank you.
Yeah, I, again, I have emergency services background, and just, yeah, it is very fluid and makes sense, and I didn't have the privilege of seeing the other one, but this is, I mean, detail that's great. So good work. Thank you very much for all your effort and hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I will say this, and I did tell you this before, Allison, you are here because of our tragedy. Every school district should have somebody like you.
Thank you. True story.
I'm very proud of the work that you've done, very proud of the work that Vicki has put into this and our entire staff. It wasn't just done by one person. The bulk of the lifting was by you, but it is a very stout emergency operating plan, and I'm proud of it.
It definitely took.
And I'm proud of you.
Everyone from Human Resources, Special Education, Secondary Elementary, it's even Michelle. Like, it was everyone, and everyone was willing to help, and it takes a team effort, much like with anything in evolving safety and security in this district, it takes all of us. And so it's the way that it is because of all the help that I had to make that what it is. So thank you.
And believe me, I would love to show this to the community. I would, I would, I would be very proud for anybody to look through it. And we're hoping that the state takes some cues for what Oxford has done. So, my voice is going out on me.
We gotta vote.
Gotta vote. Yeah, we gotta vote.
That's okay. You don't have to stand there for.
So that was the discussion portion of it. Any further discussion?
James seconded it. We have to vote.
Yep, James seconded. I had the discussion. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Very well done. Very well done.
My mother said I came out speaking, and I think my voice is failing me now. We've already had unscheduled audience participation or public comment. We have a list of scheduled activities, ranging from meetings to graduations. They are all posted on our website. Is there any administrative clarification on any of our, okay? Final board comments? Anybody? James?
I just want to say, normally, you know, I don't have any comments, but with the topics that we've covered tonight, with the Honor Community Health, and the emails that we're getting from the community and the different people we've talked to, I just want to reiterate, your voices are being heard and it's being considered, and I appreciate everybody taking the time tonight to come out to speak to us, to give us your thoughts, to go through it, to triple-check it. I highly encourage everybody to come to the town hall, to listen and to ask questions and stuff. It's not something that is gonna quickly get pushed through, but, you know, it's definitely something that's, in my opinion, more than just us here, and for the fact that, you know, the community on both sides, pro and not with it, are voicing it. I appreciate that. I mean, obviously, it's a topic of concerns on both sides, so thank you to everybody and to everybody here that asked questions and stuff and thought of other questions that I didn't ask.
Okay. Anybody? Mary?
Thank you. And going through the scheduled activities, I just wanted to bring all this exciting things coming on, just reminding board members of all the exciting commencement, I would, I love them all, just watching our kids growing. The OSEC capstone presentation is always exciting this weekend. I was, Thursday night, I was at Acorn Stamping, listening to some bands, some current and former OSEC students playing in some bands, while my daughter, a former OSEC student, was taking some photos. You can find it on Instagram. Anyway, and I have a calendar hanging up in my office that has the Dogs of Oxford from another OSEC student. So they do some amazing, amazing things with these capstone projects, so I strongly suggest you get to that also if you can. And I wanted to let everybody know, I did attend the MASB Day at the Capitol. That was last week, last week Wednesday. We had some information. We talked about sinking funds and uses. We talked about the budget. I also had an opportunity in the afternoon with, to meet with two of the representatives that represent our students. So we have one main representative for Oxford, but we also have two little offshoots that go up into Lapeer County, and there are, there's a different representative for each of those little offshoots. So I did get to see one, and I spoke with some staffers from another office, and I was able to chat briefly with our state senator's office. They're all new for us this year because of redistricting, so, which was my goal, was to be able to have a chance to at least make some connections and remind them that Oxford's here.
Very good. I just want to thank Todd for his work. It's not easy when you have this job to do, and then you have a whole bunch of information that you need to pull together for our questions. You've done it very well. I'm also proud of my fellow board members. They've asked some really good fundamental questions, and those questions are how we become not only just a better board, but a better district. And we, but I want everybody to realize that this is a difficult decision, and we have to remember that the decisions that we make are what's best for all students. And whatever decision we make, we have to be grounded in the fact that our feelings and our conscience are, is this best for all students? And whatever way that goes, it's, that's the way that this vote is gonna go. So with that, anybody else?
No.
Oh, tomorrow's Administrative Assistance Day. So thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
Yeah, she keeps me, she keeps me going in the right direction. She gets me my folder, makes sure I know where I'm gonna be, and, because I have, but you didn't give me your readers, so. Okay, we have a closed session that we need to go in briefly, hopefully. Would somebody like to make that motion?
No.
Heather?
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8, 1H, to consider material exempt for disclosure, specifically material protected by attorney-client privilege.
Is there support? James?
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. DeAlessandro?
Yes. Okay. We'll be going into a closed session briefly, and we hopefully will come out relatively quickly.
Okay, we are out of closed session at 9:42. We have a resolution, and this is in regards to a FOIA request that was appealed to the board.
Whereas, oh, I'm, I'm not there. Sorry. Whereas, on April 7th, 2023, Ms. Anna Clark sent the district a request under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act FOIA, MCL 15.231, seeking emails from the district's insurance carrier. On April 11th, 2023, the district denied the FOIA request. On April 14th, 2023, the requestor sent an email appealing the denial. The board received the appeal at tonight's meeting. The board has carefully considered the requestor's appeal. Now therefore, be it resolved that Ms. Clark's FOIA appeal is granted in part and denied in part. The board directs its board president to work with the superintendent and legal counsel to provide a written decision consistent with this resolution, and to take appropriate measures to ensure that the FOIA appeal response complies with Michigan law. This resolution may not be construed as waiver of the attorney-client privilege, and the board affirmatively states that it has not waived in any manner the attorney-client privilege. All resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
Okay. Is there any, is there any discussion?
Not with the res, not necessarily with the resolution.
Want to take a roll call vote, please?
I shall. Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. DeAlessandro?
Yes.
That leaves no yays. We do have Mr. Whitney and Dr. Reese, who are not present.
Correct. Okay.
So, yep, then the motion is declared as adopted. Is that for you to say, Dan?
Yes, the motion is adopted, and I will be getting with Vicki, making sure that this request is made available to the, to the party. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. And that means that this meeting is adjourned at 9:45.